Good evening, guests. This meeting of the... I call the meeting to order of the City Council of Commerce City August nineteenth. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Thank you all for being here today. Have a few things to take care of. We have proclamation recognition for Mark Madison for years of service at Walgreens. I'd like to invite Laura Moody from Economic Development
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers, thank you. This proclamation honors Mark Madison's 43 years of service with Walgreens. Mr. Madison has most recently been working as the store manager for the store at East 104th Avenue and Chambers Road since last December. Mr. Madison began his career as a junior in high school at the company formerly known as Skaggs, a company later bought out by Walgreens. He cites the love of the retail and merchandising industries and the desire to create a good customer service experience as the driving forces behind his dedication to the company. The Economic Development Division encourages businesses to locate in the city and tries to support all of the businesses that choose to operate here. When Walgreens opened in 2015, it was one of the earliest retail businesses in the city's newly developing northern range. In addition to providing services to residents and visitors, these retail businesses like Walgreens positively influence economic change in our community by generating wealth through capital investment, job growth, and building the local tax base. Tonight, we would like to celebrate Mark Madison's dedication to Walgreens and to thank Walgreens as one of the retail businesses that operate in Commerce City. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, we have a proclamation here. I'd ask, there's a motion to approve the proclamation.
I'd make a motion to approve proclamation recognizing Mark Madison for his years of service.
Thank you. Mr. Davis.
I'd like to second that motion.
A motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the proclamation?
Whereas Mark Madison has celebrated 43 years of service to Walgreens, and whereas as the store manager at the 15310 East 104th Avenue location, Mr. Madison is responsible for supervising 15 employees and providing excellent customer service to Commerce City residents and visitors, and whereas Walgreens positively influences economic change in our community by generating wealth through capital investment, job growth, and building the local tax base. And whereas Walgreens provides that place where community members can make health and wellness a priority, therefore, the City Council of Commerce City does hereby honor Mark Madison for his 43 years of service to Walgreens and for his steadfast commitment to helping build a quality community for a lifetime.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. That motion is carried. Mark, do you have anything you'd like to say before we come down and give you this proclamation?
Thank you.
All right. The council join me down front, please.[1323.91][1323.91][applause] Now, we would like to recognize members of the youth commission that participated in the paint-a-thon. If the youth commission members will come on up. I'd also like to thank Jose Wardiola and Craig Hurst. You both were there too, weren't you? Are there any other council members I'm missing? I want to thank you guys for being there as well and thank you for being at the paint-a-thon, helping out a resident here in Commerce City with painting their house. And for doing that, we have Rexiter pass for each of you and a pass for Paradise Island as well. Why don't you tell everyone your name? You don't have to give your address, just your name and a little bit about the youth commission and what you do.
Okay, so my name is Jasner Carr and right now currently I am the Chair of Commerce City Youth Commission. And basically what we do as youth is go out in the community, do volunteering activities, services, anything like that. And we do conferences as well at
Mike Colley, Colley Companies.
Jenny Hurst.
Thank you all for being here today. Have a few things to take care of. We have proclamation recognition for Mark Mattson for years of service at Walgreens. I'd like to invite Laura Moody from Economic Development forward to introduce Mark.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers, thank you. This proclamation honors Mark Madison's 43 years of service with Walgreens. Mr. Madison has most recently been working as the store manager for the store at East 104th Avenue and Chambers Road since last December. Mr. Madison began his career as a junior in high school at the company formerly known as Skaggs, a company later bought out by Walgreens. He cites the love of the retail and merchandising industries and the desire to create a good customer service experience as the driving forces behind his dedication to the company. The Economic Development Division encourages businesses to locate in the city and tries to support all of the businesses that choose to operate here. When Walgreens opened in 2015, it was one of the earliest retail businesses in the city's newly developing northern range. In addition to providing services to residents and visitors, these retail businesses like Walgreens positively influence economic change in our community by generating wealth through capital investment, job growth, and building the local tax base. Tonight, we would like to celebrate Mark Madison's dedication to Walgreens and to thank Walgreens as one of the retail businesses that operate in Commerce City. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, we have a proclamation here. I'd ask, there's a motion. Approve the proclamation. Mr. Teague.
I'd make a motion to approve proclamation recognizing Mark Madison for his years of service.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
I'd like to second that motion.
A motion and a second. Will the city attorney please read the proclamation?
Whereas Mark Madison has celebrated 43 years of service to Walgreens, and whereas as the store manager at the 15310 East 104th Avenue location, Mr. Madison is responsible for supervising 15 employees and providing excellent customer service to Commerce City residents and visitors, and whereas Walgreens positively influences economic change in our community by generating wealth through capital investment, job growth, and building the local tax base, and whereas Walgreens provides that place where community members can make health and wellness a priority, therefore, the City Council of Commerce City does hereby honor Mark Madison for his 43 years of service to Walgreens and for his steadfast commitment to helping build a quality community for a lifetime.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, saying nay. That motion is carried. Mark, do you have anything you'd like to say before we come down and give you this proclamation?
Thank you.
All right. The council join me down front, please. Now, we would like to recognize members of the youth commission that participated in the Paint-a-Thon. If the youth commission members will come on up. And also like to thank Jose Wadiola and Craig Hurst. You both were there too, weren't you? Is there any other council members I'm missing? I want to thank you guys for being there as well, and thank you for being at the Paint-a-Thon, helping out a resident here in Commerce City with painting their house. And for doing that, we have Rexiter pass for each of you and a pass for Paradise Island as well. Why don't you tell everyone your name? You don't have to give your address, just your name and a little bit about the youth commission and what you do.
Okay, so my name is Jasner Carr, and right now currently I am the Chair of Commerce City Youth Commission. And basically what we do as youth is go out in the community, do volunteering activities, services, or anything like that. And we do conferences as well at Bison Ridge, just to get more youth involved with the community.
Awesome.
I'm Kyle Pham. I'm also part of the youth commission, and other things that we do is we go out on trips to show what we are doing in Commerce City to other cities across the nation as well. Anything else besides our conference? Yeah, and also community service.
Awesome, and were there any other youth commission members with you at the Paint-a-Thon? I want to make sure they get acknowledged. Do you know their names? You can mention them.
I don't know exactly their last names off the top of my head. So there was Carlos, Jesus, and Jasmine.
Great, that's what I wanted here. I believe there were five members of the youth commission. We also have passes for the other three who are not here tonight, and we'll make sure that they get their passes. So let me bring these down to you so you guys have your passes. Next, I want to invite the finance staff forward. We do have an award to present them as well. So thank you for all your hard work, because we did receive the Government Finance Officers' Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, was presented to Commerce City on behalf of all your hard work in the finance department, and we want to say thank you for all you do for our community in your department.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of council. The budget is certainly one of the longest and largest tasks our department undertakes. I have three people on our budget team. Zach Cartaya is one of our budget analysts. Chris Johnson is the other budget analyst. He was unable to be here tonight, and that team is certainly led by Armando Wadiola. So I want to certainly recognize their efforts, but this is not just done by the finance department. All departments are involved throughout this nine-month process, as well as the opportunity to be able to speak to you several times throughout the year for the budget. So we appreciate the hard work everybody puts into this, and this award is a testament of all that hard work.
As we do, and thank you for including all the other departments for their role. However, this is especially important to the finance department because of the oversight that you all perform. So special thank you to the finance department for your efforts. The council join me down front to give this award, please.
Party, three, two, one. Add it on the first try.
And next item is citizen communication. Per council policy, citizen communication is the time on our agenda for the public to address council on businesses and affairs of the city. If you're here to speak on an ordinance or a resolution that is not on the consent agenda, please wait until that item is called. The city council is not able to hear any comments at this time on land use matters that are before or may come before the city council, including the reunion metro districts and Third Creek West annexation and zoning. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. Please give your name and address for the record, and keep your comments limited to three minutes, and thank you. I do have a list of those of you who signed up to speak on the Third Creek West hearing. But we're going to go through the citizen communication sheet now. We'll start with Kendra Cross. Kendra? No Kendra Cross? Okay. Erica Royer?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I had actually hoped to hear a little bit more information, so I'll go ahead and pass, and then if I have any questions, I'll contact Ben. I'll take notes. Thank you.
Lucy Molina.
God bless you. Lucy Molina, 6650 Claremont, Commerce City. God bless you. Thank you so much. Chronic headaches, asthma, bloody noses, so many missed days of school due to illness. That's my children's health. That is my main concern. We only, we can only afford to live here in Commerce City next to the refinery. As you know, I live next to Suncor. Is that what it means to us economic racism? Is the rating of our air quality of sections of Commerce City really enough? How can this be really? I've heard from community researchers that nearly 90% of the pages and pages and pages of public responses to the regional operator agreement were negative. That wasn't the impression I received when hearing of the city administration's review of the community responses. That review seemed to gloss over the almost overwhelming, overwhelming community position to the ROA. My children's health has only gotten worse, so even those last six years, living here in Commerce City, right? I'm happy to provide any, and I mentioned this before, I'm happy to provide any medical records to any of the city administrations. Just let me know who I can direct this information to. I've considered homeschooling as an alternative for my daughter to avoid the constant criticism of her absences by the school district representatives. Solutions. If the city administration could provide selected residents in all neighborhoods throughout the city with some very simple type of oil and gas emission detection equipment, that would, that would be totally great. As simple as a message as one of the flashes outdoor, toxic emissions are too high, bring children and pets inside, close windows and doors and run, or an air purifier inside, that would be fine. Although, I do thank you for allowing me to be part of this focus group that I was part. Mr. Mayor, during the last council meeting, you asked point blank, is this ROA was the best the city administration could produce? I can give you my opinion. As someone who has sat through over 10 hours of presentations by the city administration during the oil and gas focus group sessions, the answer is no. Now, Senate Bill 181 permits local governments to not negotiate with the oil and gas industry, especially with respect to the public health and safety and welfare. Please reject this, the contents of this regional operator agreement. To recap, my major concerns are my children's health, the children's health, all the children's health really, the air quality of Commerce City as a whole, and a full but impartial analysis of the almost 90% negative public commentary regarding the ROA. I also want to add that, and I want to thank the group for translating everything in Spanish, because as you know, we are the only one really, the city, that has translated the ROA in Spanish. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Good.
Hello, my name is Susan Noble, 10642 Ole Street. I'm going to reserve my comments for the hearing regarding the metro districts, but we'll speak about the Arsenal or Rocky Mountain National Refuge presentation that's coming up. I'm concerned particularly that there is no mention in the presentation about the lawsuit by the CDPH against the Arsenal regarding basin F and contamination and their inability to have cleaned that up. In addition, there is nothing in the presentation about earthquake faults. As you know, there were 1,600 earthquakes at the Arsenal in the 60s, and we certainly don't want to exacerbate that problem with any neighborhood drilling. I would also like to say that I have lived in Commerce City for the past six years, and our daughter bought her first home here last year. Last year also, I started along with other neighbors, North Range Concerned Citizens. Tonight, I'm announcing my candidacy for the open seat in Ward Four. As a council member, I will ensure Commerce City embodies its motto, "Quality Community for a Lifetime." I will prioritize the health, safety, and welfare of residents over special interests. I will make certain our air is clean and our water is clean. I will oppose neighborhood drilling. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susan Good.
My name is Susan Good, and I'm in the reunion metro district and want to speak about that topic, so we'll reserve my time for the public hearing.
Great, thank you. Gier Moserne.
Gier Moserne, 14122 East 102nd Place. First, let me thank you for the response on the plague. Some people think it's funny, some people don't take it serious, but the kids on the apartments right there on 104th do take it serious. There was kids playing there, and they would go into that populated, population of prairie dogs, so thank you again. The other thing is that sometimes when you get hit in the face, okay, with certain needs of a community, which I have been recently, and you look at the situations, and I'm talking about Alheimers, that doesn't have any boundaries whether you're black, poor, rich, whatever, and you look at the pharmacies, and I'm sorry to say, it had nothing to do with the presentation that you had there, because I'm pretty sure this gentleman did his job well and what he had to do. So please, listen to what I'm telling you. It's the pharmacies that provide the essence of good health to the community, but in looking at the expenses that I and my family will be going through in these next three, four, maybe five years, it's hard to see how they're going to make it. Going into the support services for this disease that is here, there's two of them, and it eats the mind, and in going to the supporting services that are there as far as how to deal with them, they can't deal with it. The pressure is tremendous, and then you get hit with prices at the pharmacies. You ask, can you do something about it? And they just pass the buck, okay? I'm asking for this community, the poor community, that right now is one out of five, I think, that have this disease, to come up with something, to ask the legislature to do something about this. People are going broke, people are going homeless, and it's seniors, and there's no end to when this situation is going to end. The young people that are here, so please consider, you are our protectors and you look at the needs of a community. You have the poor, you have the rich, and you have new people coming in. So I'm asking for your assistance in writing something to our legislature and our governor to do something about here, about this in Colorado. We can't waste any more time. Thank you.
Thank you. Reba Droder.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Reba Droder, 7505 East 121st Place, 80602, and I am here in support of the, my unwavering confidence in the United States Fish and Wildlife to manage our wonderful refuge. Now, a lot of you may not know this, I was on every board that there was for the restoration. I grew up half a block away, learned to drive out there, and I do most of the tours that are there. I have literally decades and thousands and thousands and thousands of hours out on the refuge. I've had opportunity to watch every single entity and government agency work out there, and I want to tell you that the work that the United States Fish and Wildlife and the restoration of the Arsenal have done is just beyond belief. And if people would take time, the volumes, actually rooms of documents on the magnificent work and science that they have done out there. And here tonight, we have Charlie Sharman and David Lucas, the manager. I saw Kip Sherodis. These are people that have been there forever, and I have, I want you to know that how they are managing the plague. Those of us that grew up in Commerce City are not worried one little bit. Plague comes and goes every 10 to 15 years. I grew up right next to it. These people are doing a magnificent job, and for instance, the release of the black-footed ferret, that is the most, the best example, because it's the best release ever in the United States. Am I correct, Charlie? David? I believe it is, and they are living a long life, and I just want you to know that you should have the same confidence that I have, because I'm an eyewitness. So thank you.
Thank you. Ron Tarlini.
Hi, my name is Ron Tarlini. I live at 10251 Norfolk. Thank you for giving me time to say what I think I need to say. I'm not going to say anything that you don't know about the prairie dog situation. I'm going to speak from my perspective, which is my backyard backs up to it. I have grandchildren that are staying with me right now. There's some fear of them approaching that. They have, over the last three years, we've been there a little over three years, the population seems to have been moving toward the houses, so they are trying to dig into my yard, they've been in my yard, and so there's some fear for my grandchildren, quite honestly, with that, as well as the people that are hikers. I live two houses north of the path, and hikers, bikers, people that are unaware that they're even there, that there's, you know, some potential issues there. The digging under the yard and digging into the yard, it's obviously a problem for being able to, you know, maintain my property the way I'd like to maintain it. And then I guess the last issue is, you know, how will this, if this continues, they keep moving toward my yard, getting into my yard, you know, with property value, I worry about that a little bit, so, thank you for that. Thank you. Thank you.
Patricia.
Hello, my name is Patricia Gonzalez. I live at 10267 Norfolk Street, and I'm also here for the prairie dogs that I back up to the open space at Buckley Ranch. And the first two years I lived in my home, we didn't have any issues with the prairie dogs, there was tall prairie grasses, and since then, the last two years have been a complete nightmare. The prairie dogs are also digging underground into my yard, so there's no way to prevent me from having them in my backyard, so they've kind of taken over, and my children can't play outside, we can't enjoy our backyard space, and I'm concerned with the diseases that they carry and the damage that they'll be causing to my property that I can't prevent because they dig holes underground. I've contacted exterminating, they can't do anything because where they're coming from, the source is not my property. I've contacted the city, who's told me to contact HOA, who's told me to contact, you know, it's just been this round and round and round, and I'm just hopefully hoping that you guys can help us with the issue that we're facing. Thank you.
We're gonna be discussing that tonight, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. All right, that takes care of the list for citizen communication. Is there anyone in the audience who had the desire to sign up but didn't get the opportunity that would like to raise their hand so they can come up and speak for their three minutes? John, come on up.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers John Pointon, 1217 Venice Street, Longmont, Colorado. I'm with Adams 14 Schools. Over the past two weeks, I've had three opportunities to work with Commerce City Police Department regarding school district matters. The service, the level of service, the quickness of response has been stellar, and I just want to recognize them, and I know last night they worked extraordinarily hard through the night on a very difficult, sad loss that we've experienced in our school district and our community last night. So I just wanted to express my gratitude for all the hard work that they are providing. Today, I had the opportunity to meet personally one of, two of one of our new SROs, Officer Andrew Hadley, and this simply would not happen without your leadership and your assistance, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and we'll move on into our agenda. We have the consent agenda. The agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are six items listed under the consent agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove any of those items off of the consent agenda? Anyone? Saying none? I'm open for a motion. Mr. Wadiola.
Motion, accept the consent agenda, as council seated.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frank.
Second that motion.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Will the city attorney please read the titles?
Minutes of August 5, 2019, ordinance 2232, an ordinance amending the 2019 budget of the State of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Colorado Department of Transportation grant in the amount of $18,000 for DUI enforcement efforts and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2233, an ordinance amending the 2019 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of funds returned from the City of Northland in the amount of $27,678 to be used as a contribution to Ralston Health and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Resolution 2019-93, resolution endorsing the Commerce City Crosswalk Treatment Evaluation Policy. Resolution 2019-95, resolution authorizing a word of contract for 2019 asphalt mill and overlay project to aggregate Industries, WCR, Inc. Resolution 2019-96, resolution authorizing intergovernmental agreement with Urban Drainage and Flood Control District regarding funding of major drainageway planning for regweed drain and tributaries.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion and a second. The titles have been read. I'll ask for a roll call vote. For the record, the consent agenda is approved unanimously with one absent. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. We have annexations and zoning for Third Creek. Tonight's first public hearing will be consolidated public hearing for resolution 2019-71 and 2019-72, annexation ordinances 253-19 and 254-19, and zoning ordinance Z94617 through 19. Because the terms of the annexation agreement have not yet reached the city council, we will not be voting on the property's eligibility for annexation, any annexation ordinances for the zoning tonight. The city council may continue this hearing to a later date. I'd like to invite the, I mean, open the public hearing, and I'd like to invite the staff forward to make their presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Appreciate your time tonight. Robin Kearns in the Planning Division, here to present these three cases, AN-253-19, AN-254-19, and Z-946-17-19. The location is at the northeast corner of 104th and E470. Our applicant is the Cali Companies, and we are discussing annexations with subsequent annexation zoning. Repeating what you had just spoken, Mr. Mayor, is tonight's agenda only includes the public hearing on the eligibility of these properties for annexation, which is required to be conducted pursuant to the Annexation Act and the Annexation Zoning, but there will be no formal action tonight. City of Council cannot annex the property until an annexation agreement has reached pursuant to the Land Development Code. So further action is anticipated if this agreement on annexation conditions can be reached, and I believe that is in process, so I will continue on. The applicant is requesting the following. First request is the annexations from Adams County into Commerce City, and the second is an annexation zoning to Third Creek West PUD. The vicinity map helps us see this property in the proposed configuration. It's north of East 104th, east of E470, and it's basically, obviously vacant at this time. It's about 234, 38 acres, and is currently Adams County zoned A3 for agriculture. The comprehensive plan has multiple designations for this area. It has a commercial running on the west along E470, has a residential medium up in the northeast, has a mixed-use E470 in the center, and a mixed-use, sort of a normal mixed-use on the southern side along 104th. There are also two designations, the regional commercial center, which is really the intersection of E470 and 104th, speaking to its potential as a regional center for shopping or other kind of commercial activity. And then there, on to the east of that, is the community commercial center at what would be Himalaya and East 104th. The constraints are, that I'm going to speak to you, are really important to understand in terms of where the direction of the zoning went on this property and from what is shown in the comp plan. There are some existing oil and gas sites that are circled. There's a very large electric transmission line along the western side. There's existing low-density residential ag-type properties just to the north of the subject area in here, and the topography, although relatively flat, is draining off towards the Third Creek drainage, but it's, it is significantly different than the elevation of E470, which is substantially lower than the subject property. I have some pictures to that effect. So, in about a year, about a year, year and a half ago, we began working on a concept plan, and that was reviewed in May of 2018. And it shows, basically, the idea was turning the commercial would be more effective along the southern edge, along the East 104th side, transitioning with mixed use up towards residential to the north, which would then kind of help buffer that existing neighborhood. And that's the plan that we're sort of seeing the second generation of tonight. These are the pictures from E470. You can see both the significant power lines as well as the topography. You're not really getting a commercial exposure along E470. And here's another picture, both on the lower one looking up at the site and the top one looking, you're really at the intersection of 104th and E470. You can see the, it is flat once you're up there, but it is pretty significantly different in overall elevation. Standing on the site, looking south from East 108th is the top picture, and you can see the existing transmission lines as well as an existing oil and gas facility. Looking west on 108th, you're seeing a much more active oil and gas facility. So, request number one with the annexations, basically to take this amount of land, it's come in a two-part kind of sequential annexation because of the contiguity with Commerce City, which is really down here on the south end. So basically, the first part is bringing in a piece that has enough contiguity, and then once that's in, then you'd have the second part come in totaling about 238 acres. This is a picture of the annexation maps in that sequential order, with the AN-253 case on the south side, beginning the annexation of about 100 acres, and then the next annexation above it of about 138 acres. I will note that this annexation does include the right-of-ways of Himalaya and East 108th, but there is no development planned at this time or direct connection to include in the proposed development. There'll be a connection for the neighbors that live there to access, but will not make a through road until some sort of future development is planned. So there's a bit of an analysis that goes on with annexations, so if you still mind, I'll move through that. So the city council adopted a plan for the area to be annexed pursuant to Colorado statute At least one-sixth of the area to be annexed must be contiguous with the existing boundary of Commerce City, and I just spoke to that, and that's why we have the two-part. A community of interest exists between the area proposed to be annexed and the City of Commerce City. This is in our future growth boundary. The areas proposed to be annexed are urbanized or will be urbanized in the future, and you can see that in our comprehensive plan. The areas proposed to be annexed are integrated, are capable of being integrated with the City of Commerce City, and that has been found. All of the owners of the lands to be annexed have signed the petition for annexation, and that is as well. No annexation proceedings have been effectively commenced or for any other land proposed to be annexed to any other municipality, and there is none. Proposed annexation will not result in the detachment of area from any school district, detachment of such area to another school district. This is all within 27J school district. The following note has actually been changed, so the annexation petitions meet the requirements of law. When this was uploaded, we were waiting for one more petition to be provided from the applicant for the annexations, and that has been provided, so you can disregard this pending comment. Proposed annexations will not have the effect of extending the boundaries of Commerce City more than three miles in any direction for any point of such boundary in one year, and that is the case. And the entire width of any street or alley proposed to be annexed is included in this annexation, and as I had mentioned, 108th and Himalaya are being annexed. And then all requirements of Colorado statute 31-12-104, 31-12-105, and section 30 of Article 2 of the state constitution have been satisfied with respect to this annexation. Thank you. We will move on to the request number two, which is the annexation zoning part, and talks, and basically, the discussion begins with the applicant's intent to create a mixed-use development envisioning to bring a dynamic mix of residential and commercial uses, promoting the city's comprehensive plan and the E470 influence planning area goals to life, if you will. The site-focused strategy is to promote the commercial and mixed use while keeping a strong residential foundation, which we saw that kind of the layout. They utilize similar land use descriptions, densities, and intent, and that is the case. And due to site constraints, the land uses have been shifted from intense commercial fronting E470 to utilizing that access and frontage of Himalaya and 104th, and we kind of talked about those constraints a little earlier. Looking at the land use plan kind of map, if you will, the planning areas, essentially the idea is, and I note that this is currently, again, Adams County A3, and the proposal is to go to the Third Creek West PUD. The idea is really to have your largest low-density residential kind of up north, and then you still have more residential buffer before you get to a mixed-use area in the middle of E and F, and then G and H on the bottom are designated for commercial. So G and H would only allow residential as part of vertical mixed-use development. The E and F mixed-use would only allow a percentage of residential as part of a vertical or horizontal development. Overall, there's a maximum of 1,050 units being proposed or allowed for a maximum, and that's only in the areas A, B, C, D, E, and F, G and H will be excluded as more of a different animal in the commercial sense and the vertical construction. Sort of looking at these bulk standards, what you're seeing is combination of sort of the larger single-family lot type home you're used to, with also what we're seeing a lot of, which is smaller lot detached kind of cluster home or other that you may be starting to see more of. And then there's also allowing for your single-family attached, which would be like duplexes, townhomes, and you get into some multifamily residential or apartments ability, and then the non-residential is at the bottom. And this is trying to allow for significant future development as, again, that regional commercial center designation, and given the E470 artery, we wanted to make sure there was plenty of height allowance and building allowance for the more intense areas. Just trying to break these down for a little side-by-side comparison on the residential side. Mainly, you see that that area B is more limited in terms of it's only allowing basically larger lot and the rear-loaded smaller, but in general, you can kind of see that they're trying to provide for a large demographic in terms of home type. These square footages are consistent with our Land Development Code for what we do have designated and still, but also allowing for some, maybe option for different kind of demographics. We did talk about the large commercial planning areas and supporting that regional commercial center. Connectivity is an important aspect of a large development like this. So on your left is the existing transportation plan. You can see Himalaya as a north-south minor arterial, and then off of that at around 108th would be a major collector. Trying to respect the input from the neighborhood, which received at a neighborhood meeting previous this year, the idea was kind of buffer the existing neighborhood, make those existing 108th and Himalaya, really keep them in that rural state, and bring Himalaya offline somewhat to this curvature here, and then bring it back online, which is not unusual. If you go further down along E470, Himalaya does have to rotate occasionally or get off off-linement because of the configuration along E470. Let's see, so we talked about the buffering homes, and then basically, this connection here would not be allowed until some sort of future development occurred, so this would not be a through access. This would be the access point, giving the existing neighbors their access. And then you really get into what would help make the proposed neighborhood in terms of some nodes of access and kind of beginning of your neighborhoods and your areas to highlight those for primary, the community entry places. In terms of analysis, we move infrastructure. Well, the water and sewer needs to be extended under E470 from the west coming here to the east, and they do need to join the GIDs, and those are actually on the item tonight, but will be sort of similar to this finalized at a future date, hopefully. Fire would be served by South Adams County Fire Protection District. The police would be the Commerce City police. Parks and open space, there is no current public park and open space designation in terms of the Prairie Way Action Plan denoting something in this area. However, the development still has to provide its private park requirement, which is a 3% minimum. 3% minimum, but the city will work with the applicant. If they go to higher densities, then they'll have to provide higher amounts of private parking. There's a bit of floodplain on that north end, and that's where they've focused one of their detention ponds in that relationship, so it shouldn't affect the actual development. In terms of civic uses, there's no, none proposed in this development. I did highlight the location under the comprehensive plan, future land use plan map, where the schools would lay out. This app, the applicant has been working with 27J, and the decision, the one school really in this area would, is really kind of where that Himalaya came offline, so the decision was to ideally move it to the east, so it would be part of a next development. The land to the east of this development is also owned by the applicant, so they are in conjunction, in coordination with 27J. The design standards and landscaping, basically, they'd come in as a separate document, and they'd be, they'd give the applicant and the staff more time to work on it, and it would be completed when the plating and the PUD permit are in process. The existing oil and gas operations are being renegotiated in those terms of surface use agreements. The sites would be capped and abandoned, and then are required a 50-foot setback to any livable structures from those capped and abandoned locations. No conflicts with DIA. It is not in the noise contours or in conflict with the FA height maximums in this location. And phasing would be market-dependent, likely starting with the residential areas. In terms of annexation zoning approval criteria, there's really three that are looked at in what's most compatible, and in this case, it's, the first was found to be most compatible, which is that the zoning is most compatible with the city's comprehensive plan designations for the property. So, we kind of create this unique zoning, and to do that, we have thus the Third Creek West PUD to match our future land use designations. In terms of public notification, this is, this site is large enough, so it requires the 500-feet notice, so that notified 28 adjacent property owners. There was a local paper notice, and two signs were posted. As of this date, staff has received two requests for additional information and nine comment letters in support. Let's see, staff did want to point out that those comment letters have been placed on your diocese for review, as they were still coming in later last week and even today. Let's see. Referral agency comments. The urban drainage, basically, there was nothing found to be objectionable as much as an important note from urban drainage that requires the site to accommodate future drainage on property to the south. The applicant and the, which, and the adjacent property owner, which is Shay, have worked out a drainage agreement, and that is in your packet, so that at such future time, that area to the south of this one will be allowed drainage through the development. Just two things of note, there are, as we are making a motion tonight, there are a minor edit on the zoning document and the annexation map, the second one, 254, that needed to be cleaned up, just a technical like numbers error, but that will be done in between now and next public hearing. And thus, the annexations have been reviewed by the development review team, and that recommends that the city council find that the properties are eligible for annexation and annex the properties upon completion of an acceptable annexation agreement. Annexation zoning, in terms of that request, well, we had a planning commission hearing on August 6, 2019, and they recommended five to zero to recommend approval to the city council regarding this request. I will note, there were a couple of folks who spoke at that hearing, some a little worried about the future roads coming through that neighborhood. Basically, everybody who spoke was from the existing neighborhood. They were worried about the roads potentially coming through their neighborhood and worried about schools being built to provide for kids, and just wondering about, you know, how this will overall develop the residential and the commercial. So, those are sort of the main points taken away. And with that, I'm, end of my presentation, and the applicant has one as well for you, and definitely here for any questions, so thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone on council have any questions for our staff concerning this presentation? I think not. Thank you. Did you have something, Mr. Davis? Go ahead.
Not for staff, mayor. I'll wait.
Right, no problem. The applicant is present. I'd like a representative to come forward and go ahead and give your presentation, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is David Foster, 360 South Garfield, Denver, 80209. Pleased to be here tonight on behalf of the applicant. I'm with Mike Cowley, who is the owner and the applicant this evening. We've got a whole team here because we're prepared and excited to be able to answer any questions that you may have at the end of our presentation. We've got our planners from Norris, we've got our engineers from Redlands, we've got Susan Stanton, who's helped a lot over the course of the history with this project. So, if there's a question that you have, if we don't have the answer, I'll be surprised tonight. do you mind if I hand out this packet of information?
Robert needed to get up, anyway.
Still has more steps he needs to achieve today, I think. As those packets are making their way to you, let me, let me take a moment, and I know that we do this on a regular basis, but I want to thank your staff. Robin has been tremendous. Roger, of course, has been tremendous. Brian has been tremendous. But probably something you don't hear too often is your city attorney is the best. And so, Robert has been fantastic to work with, and city attorneys don't get half the credit that they deserve in their jobs, so take it easy on me tonight, Robert. So, let me start, and as you open up that packet, I'd like you to focus just for a moment, and Robin, you're going to click for me?
Absolutely.
Thanks. So, on the left side, you have this diagram, and I thought it was important tonight not to just jump in and talk about a 240-acre annexation, but for some of us, I think it was important to spend a few minutes talking about the history of this site and the history of this applicant, who came to town back in 2007, purchasing nearly 4,000 acres from the Van Skok family, all over Adams County, and some in Denver and some in Aurora. And this is a timeline of an applicant who has been, in every aspect of the word, a partner with the city. And I wanted to make sure, and this kind of gave Mike Cowley a little bit of a stomachache as we were kind of preparing for today, that for the last 14 years, we've been working on this project very patiently, and I have here six different studies that we had worked on, on behalf of the project, going back to a study in 2012, dealing with the possibility of retail on all of these properties on the east side of E470. This study, you'll appreciate, because this was a 2013 study that discussed the impacts of doing a hotel on the Nob Hill site, which we'll identify on a map in a moment, with respect to and recognizing that the Gaylord Hotel was going to be built in the region. It should be noted that three years earlier, when Gaylord was outlooking, this was a site that was early considered for the Gaylord Hotel as well, and of course, we know where that ended up. And then, we have a study from 2015 here, because it was important at that time, as you'll remember, when we were negotiating with Denver and dealing with the Aratropolis, making sure that as Denver was going to have development opportunities on airport, that we in Commerce City and elsewhere weren't going to be disadvantaged by the development on airport, and so, we commissioned another study through THK alongside the city that we made available. And then, we've been a part of all of the Aratropolis visioning studies along the way. So, the history that Mike and his team have had in the city is a long one, and it's a great one, and it's been a partnership. And I also included on that left side, just so you could see a couple of the images that were created along the way for some of the projects that didn't quite make it to this site, and I'll say, not yet, but that we can still maybe have a chance at in the future. So, and that leads us to tonight's hearing. So, why don't we move on to the next slide, if you don't mind? So, as I was indicating, the purchase in 2007 was of nearly 4,000 acres. You can see from Northlands, just north of the airport, Third Creek and Nob Hill, the Third Creek West, and then the Second Creek site, which has been begun development in Commerce City, fortunately, and then Aviation Station, which is the Penya Station project. Mike has some property there, and then over Sandy Point and Aurora. So, you can see how the property that was purchased kind of was assembled. Why don't we move on to the next slide, if you don't mind, Robin? So, we can get up here as land use people and planners, and we can talk about 1,300 and 1,500 or 200-acre sites, and sometimes there's no context for it. And I think that this map is an important map so that you can have a sense of context. First, just in terms of size, and you can see how we have placed the Third Creek and Nob Hill site on a map, comparing it to the Denver Tech Center, which is on your right, spanning from Bellevue down to County Line Road. And you can see the red is the Cowley property. So, from a, from just a sheer size perspective, it's a very large piece of property. But then, the historical context, I think, has always been amazing as it relates to the site, because there are so many similarities between this project and this property that Commerce City has and the Tech Center. You have a significant road running alongside it, whether it's I-25, or we have E470. You have E470 on the south side of 25, and we have either I-70 or Penya, take your pick. And then, on the north side, the Tech Center has 225, and we have 76 on the north side. You have, obviously, the relationship to airports. Centennial is a very busy airport. For those of you who spend any time down in the Tech Center, you know that it's a very busy airport, and of course, I don't need to tell you about Denver. So, the perspective here, we thought, was interesting, and the evolution of development within this corridor. The mix of uses in the Denver Tech Center has historically been residential and office and commercial throughout the corridor. You're even seeing some formerly commercial properties now being redeveloped as high-rise residential that were formerly kind of low-rise commercial. And so, we're seeing an evolution of what happens in these significant corridors. And I, again, I think that this is a slide that we've used for a couple of years, but I think it's relevant to understand the perspective here. Why don't we move on to the next slide, if you don't mind? And this is, I didn't know whether or not to talk, title this "The Good News" or "The Bad News" story, but this is the development in the Aratropolis, and many of the projects in the Aratropolis have chosen not to locate in Commerce City along this corridor. And I can give you a few examples of those, whether it was North Face, whether it was the Gaylord, as I mentioned. We, of course, as you've seen in the semittel, we made a run at Amazon HQ2. But I think one of the more important and recent examples is the Karcher site, that moved from Denver, just down the street, to Aurora on the Porteos site. And you may note that Porteos started as a surface lot that was providing surface lot services to DIA. So, that developer started their project with a parking lot, off-airport parking lot. And so, frankly, there have been some opportunities missed in this corridor for significant employers and investment within the city. Why don't we move on to the next slide? So, we began this specific application with a meeting back in May of 2018 with the Planning Commission, and Robin did an excellent job of explaining how, as we were meeting with the Planning Commission, is in kind of working through the land uses associated with the site, it became apparent that the commercial wanted to be along 104th and not along E470. That might seem counterintuitive, because everybody wants great visibility off of E470, but really, you can only see that site just a little bit as you head north because of the way in which the terrain is. And so, we relocated the commercial along 104th and then moved the residential north from there. And then, we had a neighborhood meeting back in January of 2019, and I hope and think that some of our neighbors are here, and we've worked in good faith with them, and we've made some modifications to our plans in respect to them. And then, what we did, and it's not a typical endeavor, I will promise you, is we had a series of stakeholder meetings. So, on the right side of the packet that I gave you, you will see this executive summary that we have done, and if you do nothing else as it relates to this executive summary, page 13 is actually the summary, and it will give you a good sense of the kind of findings that many people, some people who had sat in your seat historically, and people who live and work in your community, and you can see on the second page, the people who participated in our, in our process. And it was a good process, and we sought as much information from really the people who I think matter the most, the people who live and work in Commerce City. And so, that's what we endeavored to do and resulted in our, our application tonight. Why don't we move on to the next slide? So, this is a, a slide that I am entitling, "When eating an elephant, you start by taking one bite at a time." What we endeavored to do back in 2012 and 2013 is say, hey, let's, let's go for it. And we had countless meetings with Roger and your team to talk about how do we finance and build water and sewer and storm and roads and all the infrastructure needed to bring that entire, that entire area, that entire mass, online? And what we realized, which we should have realized earlier, is it was just too big to take on altogether. And so, that's what led us to Third Creek West, because the effort to cross E470 and open up this area for future development, we think, is the linchpin to allowing other investment in the future. And it can't all happen at the same time, and so, we decided to, again, start with 230, it's 238 acres, which represents a little under 15% of our holdings in this, in this area. Oh, we're really, no, that's great, Robin. Now, you can kind of tell from my inflection, now we're like a team. So, I wanted to take kind of a deeper dive into what So I wanted to take kind of a deeper dive into what the zoning looks like for this particular site and discuss some of the efforts that we've placed into the non-residential components. The residential components are the components that will be north, and that is about 500 residential units. And what we have here is a setup that has approximately 100,000 square feet of office, 150,000 square feet of retail, 50,000 square feet of entertainment, a 30,000 square foot marketplace, 300 rooms for hotels. And in essence, it presents an opportunity to have 50 acres of non-residential property shovel-ready. And shovel-ready is, I don't know if it's a term of art, but I will tell you, it is certainly what developers want to hear, that they've got water, and they've got sewer, and they've got infrastructure to a site so that they don't have to spend potentially 13, 14 years getting to a city council here. And that's just fine. And that's what we're providing in this, in this particular effort. So the next, yeah, we'll go to the next. So the next four slides are all about location. You know, in real estate, they say location, location, location. So we're far from water and sewer and the infrastructure. So what we have here, and our engineers are here tonight if anybody has any questions, but we have a couple of examples of the way in which the water and the sanitary gets phased and as well as the storm sewer gets developed to open up the east side of E-470. Let's move to the next slide. And here is an example of the roadway infrastructures and the phasing of roadway improvements. And then I think the next two slides are really important because some of the feedback that we've heard is, well, this is great, but you're really just serving your own purpose to open up Third Creek. And it is true that we are opening up Third Creek, but you will see in this slide that the water infrastructure that we are proposing to build actually benefits 2,600 acres and 18 separate and distinct property owners, and we are not including our neighbors to the north who are in the county on their large lots. We are talking about other property owners. And so this water infrastructure, this initial water infrastructure across E-470 opens up opportunities well beyond the Cowley property. And then the next slide, you'll see that the sanitary sewer that we're proposing to build opens up 1,800 acres for development and provides sanitary sewer to 28 differing property owners. Why the number's not the same? It's, you know, it's all about how stuff rolls. It's all about, you know, the terrain, and I know that Peach, Mike Peachman could come up and explain that. But it is, in fact, well-designed, it's engineered, and we have been working on this for quite some time and have real numbers on the costs associated with how to build this infrastructure. Let's move on to the next slide, please. So long ago, there were many nights where I would stand up here, it wasn't actually in this building, it was down the street in a basement, and we would talk about annexations across 104th Avenue, and we'd talk about the Northern Infrastructure GID because at that point, we were just putting it together. And at that point, was it not for United Power, we wouldn't have a Northern Infrastructure GID, and we wouldn't have the great development that has made the Northern Range what it is today. And then in 2013, we were here supporting the E-470 Commercial and Residential Area GID because it was important to get water and sewer and infrastructure down south along Tower Road because we knew one day that Tower Road was going to be significant, and we knew we'd have an on-ramp as well. And so we invested a lot of time and energy creating that GID. And what you did as a city at that point was you didn't look to United Power to be the investor, you were the investor. So you, as a city, put general fund money into the GID to jumpstart that project. And, and now you see the parameters of the GID that was created. So I want to think about a paradigm shift. So what's the deal? Here's the deal. We're proposing to look at your GID that you created and not look to United Power, not look to you as a city to put in your general fund money, but now look to the developer to be the investor in the initial money in that GID. So it is a paradigm shift, and it's a paradigm shift that has now taken since 2001 with the Northern Infrastruc, the Northern Range Infrastructure District to 2019. So 18 years is the period of time that it's taken now for the developer to say, I'm going to make the investment in the GID. And you'll see how we've played this out. We need just under $14 million in initial infrastructure to open up that corridor on the east side of E-470. $7 million we're proposing net bond proceeds from the commercial GID, and there is more than enough capacity within your commercial GID to accommodate that. And then what the investor, what the, what Mike Cowley will do is he'll invest the $6.8 million as first money in to build the infrastructure and not get paid back until after the infrastructure is built. And I think that this is a model that is certainly new to Commerce City. And frankly, I've not seen this model with other GIDs that I've had some familiarity with over the years. I think this is a, a new model for us to contemplate, and I'm glad that we're here after 13 or 14 years of ownership contemplating this model. And I think we're contemplating the model, frankly, with exactly the partner that you want. It's a partner that has been working side by side with the city for the past 14 years. So in summary, Robin, if you'll just hit that last one, this just is, it kind of hits a number of the issues that we've discussed. It's the Phase 1 annexation is 238 acres, less than half is residential, 50 acres shovel-ready. That the dollars that we spoke of tonight are just the public infrastructure. You can see that the investment that Mike Cowley and Lennar will make in the project is far in excess of that $13 million. And that first phase is expected to generate about $6 million in general fund revenues through all of the construction. And then at final build-out, so this is kind of the, so what's next? So what's next is, is 1,300 acres with 5,000 residents and 6,000 new jobs. And you can see the breakdown in how much commercial and mixed use, and of course, as Robin mentioned, the school sites that will be a part of those districts. And again, I recognize that there have been some issues in Commerce City as it relates to metro districts and transparency and capping, and so we will continue to work fervently with your, your staff and your city attorney and outside counsel to work on those issues. And no general fund revenue in this Phase 1 proposal. The last slide is our website, www.thirdcreekcc.com. And I know also in your packet on that right side after the summary are, you may have received these separately, are a host of letters from your neighbors, people who I respect in the community, from Senator Moreno to Maria Gonzalez to Jason Mackel Downey, a host of folks who have said they support this project, and we hope that you will as well. We, again, would love questions. We'll entertain all of the questions and concerns that you have. We have everybody here to do that tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
All right, counsel. Does anybody on counsel have any questions for the applicant representative at this time? Mr. Davis?
Evening. Thank you for presentation. How about, question as far as the commercial, have you reached out to a particular commercial? And if so, can you share with us what that vision looks like as far as what type of commercial you're bringing in into the, I believe it was A and B? I'd have to go back and look at that.
You're talking about in the initial phase?
Yes, sir.
So we have been at a number of different, in fact, I think we have a presentation with NAOP next week. We don't have, we're not bringing along a commercial developer with us. Frankly, we want to make sure that this is a real deal before we get somebody too excited for it. And so as has been our history, we'll work diligently to find the right users, the right mix of users that makes sense in this area. And you'll see, I mean, we're, we're also going to be guided by a number of the principles through the stakeholders' process as well.
How can you assure us as a board that it's the right time? How we know that?
To go, to, to begin the process of moving across E-470? Well, I guess my question is this. At what point does Commerce City realize that it's losing kind of the race for great opportunities? And I think you lost it a decade ago, and I think for good reason. I think you guys were focused on other important endeavors. I, I was heavily involved with the 2K campaign, and I think that what we did there was really important at that time. And this is the next generation. This is the kind of legacy that I would imagine that you all want to leave the city, and that is great users over here. I'll tell you now that if you don't do anything, you won't have anybody. And so can I promise who's going to show up? I can't. But I can promise you that you have the right owner in the Cowley companies to be your partners, as has been proven over the last 13 years, to move forward in opening up this corridor.
On the, thank you for that. Thank you for that response. On the $6.8 million, who pays that back and when?
So that gets paid back after the construction of that initial infrastructure, and that would be through the residential GID, only at such time as the infrastructure has been completed. So at that point, for us to scratch out a check, just like, you know, to have investment, we're going to want to have a lot of confidence that we've got opportunities within that corridor that are going to endeavor and move us forward. This deal here, this, this financial arrangement on this project is, is not a winner for, for Cowley Companies. The money that they make in this transaction is all invested into the deal. So I want to be transparent about that because they have reached the point at which they've realized that the only way that they can bring infrastructure on to the other side is to help do it themselves alongside the GID.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Douglas?
Thank you for your presentation. Several weeks ago, attended a site selector visit, and then got over to meet PD Spaceport. And I know that they're looking at Adams County and looking at a great amount of acreage in order to come in, and that's just one, one on the air, on the, on the spaceports that wants to come in and do business in Adams County. And then being on the E-470 board, the Eritropolis down there, estimated value south of DIA is $4.5 billion assessed land that you have the Highlands that want to come in and build at 40,000 population to Aurora, along with a bunch of commercial, and then the whole commercial corridor. So I get it, what you guys want to do, and the fact that you're coming in and want to put skin in the game and really get this going because there's, this is an opportunity. I mean, that's why we, we have the comprehensive plan to look at 30 years and all that, and the race to see who's going to get all the, as far as retail and, and it's, it is about opportunity, and this is a lot different than it was prior. So I do appreciate you bringing in this way instead of the other approach because this really opens things up for the future of Commerce City. I mean, you're setting the pace, and you're looking at a, a vision 50 years out and not just the time that we're here. So I, and I went to the website, and I could see all the different things that you guys want to, want to offer here. And it is, it's a lot. So, so you want to do the commercial first, and then what's the timeline for, or no, residential first, right?
We have a residential builder.
Okay.
Okay? And so the residential builder is willing to work with us on bringing the infrastructure over. And frankly, the residential on this site is complementary to the reunion project as well. So these are residents within your community. There's no reason to believe that commercial won't run alongside it if, you know, and we've got the interchange, we've got a lot of good energy on that side. And so we're hoping that it will come along, you know, rather, rather shortly. That's, that's, that's our hope. I mean, because the, the project, we're not successful unless we bring a bunch of non-residential development onto the east side of E-470. There, you can't, there isn't a project with residential throughout that entire corridor that makes sense. It just doesn't make sense. And so we're, we're bought into that. And you, you've seen the, I want, you know, there's an image in your packet, and it's still viable, is the hotel site on Nob Hill, that there's no reason that the city can't have a premier hotel site, which would be the, frankly, probably the closest hotel off, off-airport right at that site and integrate a, a small convention center with it, and that we studied that many years ago, and we still think that's viable. But there's no way any of that happens until infrastructure gets on the other side of E-470. It's, we can't continue to say, and when I say we, I think it's your staff too, that has to always say, yeah, we don't have infrastructure over there. Well, why don't you? Well, we don't control our infrastructure. We have South Adams Water and Sanitation District, and they are not us, and we are not them. And so you don't control that. And so that makes development, it's always made development interesting and more complicated in this city, but this is where we think the next step needs to be made in order to be able to say, yes, we can accommodate these uses.
I also saw on here, it says, along with the residential and then the commercial, it said about mill levy caps. What, what do you, what's the range as far as your cap in order to get this process? I mean, is this be a, a long process? What, what percentage of the caps would this be?
Did you watch out? No, go ahead.
Anticipating coming to David's rescue on this question anyway, the hearing tonight, when discussed, I don't think that's been finalized yet. Metro district would be considered at a future hearing, pardon me, possibly on September 16th if counsel, if we can reach terms on an annexation agreement. And this hearing itself could also be continued once people have had an opportunity to talk to that night as well.
All right.
It would be a standard mill levy cap that we're trying to.
Okay. I just saw that on the screen when they're going through the presentation. That's all for now. Thanks.
Is there anyone else on counsel who wishes to ask questions of the applicant representative? I think none at this time. Thank you, David.
Great, thanks.
I want to go to the audience. And I do have a list that was started here, and then after I get through the list, I'll ask if there are others. We are going to limit everyone to to three minutes because we do have quite a bit of testimony this evening. Start with Linda Padilla. Linda Padilla? No? Okay. Susan Good.
My name is Susan Good. I'm in the Reunion Metro District, and my comments are related to the Reunion Metro District Resolution 201982. So, I will wait until after that presentation for my comments.
Okay, thank you. This is for Third Creek West at this time. Chris Thomas?
My name is Chris Thomas. I'm up at Tower Road there at 10981 Himalaya Street. I just have one question for the council and everyone here. When we take all of our farmland away, what are we going to eat? If we just keep developing, how do we take and keep our farm animals going? Where are we going to get our food if we don't, if we can't grow our vegetables and we can't have animals? That's all I wanted to address to you guys to receive me. We've got to think about our children that way, too. Fresh vegetables and meat is very important to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason McEldowney? No? No Jason McEldowney? Tricia Allen?
Thank you, and good evening. I'm Tricia Allen. I'm with ACED. Our organization is located at 12200 Pecos Street in Westminster. I am here to support the project, and any of you are familiar with my organization and may wonder why we would support such an organization in light of the fact that our mission statement is the attraction and retention of primary employers. Well, we are starting to, we in economic development, are starting to awaken to the importance of place. We are planning for a future that recognizes the critical importance of quality of life to attracting talent, entrepreneurship, and encouraging local business. Place making aims to create those quality places where people want to live, work, play, and learn. And it is also driven by the economic imperative that businesses must attract and retain talent in order to succeed. So, essentially, businesses need talent, talent want place, and place needs business. And it is for these reasons that we support Cowley and the Third Creek Project, and we actually commend them for their investment in Commerce City and in Commerce City's future. And finally, I would like to thank your economic development team. You have a fantastic staff, in particular, Michelle Claymore, for her strategic leadership on this project and in the, on this project and in the process. So, thank you.
Thank you. Reba Droter?
Hello again, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Reba Droter, 7505 East 121st Place. Why would I be interested in this development? Well, I was the person that ran the campaign for the voters for the annexation of the whole north. And I love this area. And I'm kind of heartbroken that several decades have gone by, and we promised all those people that invested in Reunion and the surrounding areas that this would be developed. And of course, we had a downturn. But development seems to be passing over Commerce City. Just, just think about this for a minute. Stapleton, Northphils, that wasn't going on at all, at all. We had opportunity. I said we could have a Cabela's. Everybody said, "That's crazy." Well, where's Cabela's? For crying out loud, it's everywhere. Where's Bass Pro? Oh, yeah, right across, right across the way. And then look at Brighton. So, what's happened between there, Commerce City? Nothing. I'm, I'm very heartbroken. It's nobody's fault, I don't think. But we have an opportunity here. And so, I have many years of experience with developers that did great and developers that were really disappointing, built something that wasn't what they said they were going to build and failed. But I've been to meetings, a lot of meetings, with Cowley and the group, and I thought, "Well, what are they going to do?" Well, what they did was something completely different. I was surprised. They brought a very diverse group of stakeholders together. And they didn't say, "Here's our stuff. Here's the easel and all the stuff. And this is what we're going to do. What do you think?" They didn't do that. They said, "What do you guys think?" And these were people with great history in Commerce City and the area. And I'm going to run out of time here. So, I always bring a letter. So, I brought you all a letter. Maybe I have a second to read it. And I'm hoping that you will support this group because they responded differently. They are responding differently. I was on the board of E-470 for many years while this was being done. I was one of the people that got to open 85 and E-470 and I-70. If a town is not growing, it's dying. We don't have people lined up to come here. What an opportunity. And that's, that's basically what my letter says. And I hope you take this opportunity and run with these fine people. I've known some of them for decades.
Thank you. Annette Farner?
Mayor Ford, may I put Ms. Droter's letter in the record?
Yes, you may. Annette Farner, available? Like Eric Nelson? All right. All right. Now, that takes care of the list on Third Creek West. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this hearing? I'm going to start, I'll get the one person on the left side of the row, and then I'm going to go from front to back on the right side of the row. Come on up, Mr. Shrotas.
Good evening. Again, I'm Kip Shrotas. I'm on the board of the Friends of the Front Range Wildlife Refuge. Our interest is Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife, National Wildlife Refuge. We're really close to Third Creek West. We're really close to Nob Hill. We see that this, there's a great potential for a wildlife, residential, commercial, mixed-use development. There's the nexus. There'll be bike trails in the future. I just see a great potential to develop something in a sustainable way that has a wildlife refuge within a short bike trip. So, I'm all in favor of Third Creek West and their, and their request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Susan, come on up.
Susan Noble, 1064208. I just wanted to point out again that sometimes decisions are made in a vacuum. On the east side of 470, you'll find the Sparrow Pad, the Condor Pad, the Pelican Pad, the Owl Pad, the Falcon Pad, and the Blue Jay Pad. These are all extraction, oil and gas sites that are proposed. You're either going to approve development or you're going to approve oil and gas activity. They don't seem to be compatible because where are we going to have clean air and clean water? Secondly, we're noticing in Reunion and along Chambers Road that blue spruce are dying. And I called CSU Extension at the fairgrounds to ask what could possibly be happening. Is there an illness that's affecting blue spruce? And they told me that the aquifer is being depleted, and as the aquifer lowers, it becomes salty. You can't fix that. There is no fixing the salt. You could flood the plant, but then you're just flooding it with more salty water. So, please keep in mind that you have oil and gas activity and you have depleting aquifers. So, when you make your decisions regarding these developments, please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next person.
Good afternoon. My name is Leobie Madera. I'm at 13295 Gun Club Road. I have two sons in the 27J School District. If you were to approve this, we're already struggling in terms of financial, of the financials to just put up new schools. So, who would be responsible for the cost of putting up these three new schools? And it's hard, we've seen in 27J, taxpayers don't approve money for new teachers. So, even if you put up new schools, we're still hurting in our existing schools with the number of students we have in the classroom. We've had to go down to a four-day school week to save money. So, also, please keep that in mind as well as traffic along Tower Road.
Thank you. Next, on the right side. Caramel, I think you were the last one to hold your hand up.
Almost 20 years ago, 1,200 homes per year. It was supposed to be done by 2020, from Tower Road all the way to Highway 2 and extended to 85. We're still waiting. They promised sit-down commercial along Reunion, along 104th. We're still waiting. What did they do to bring, help you guys bring in all of this? Not enough housing, not enough housing. But yet, they build around Denver and other locations. We're dealing with a lot of traffic. We're moving too fast. You can't, and you don't understand sometimes, everything that they have planned for this area. If you're going to do something, then bring all the governments together to make it grow in the same situation. Don't get threatened that, "Hey, you made a mistake." You didn't make a mistake. You were forced into it. Yes, at that time, that city council made those decisions, but they were the wrong decisions because, oh, within 20 years, we're going to have 160,000 people to 145,000. Oil comes in, slowed things down, the economy is slowing things down. The community didn't know that you were talking, in a sense, through the planning committee and all that. We didn't have any representation there. It's always at the end. Look at how you work in this growth potential. Yes, they're willing to work with you, but they want to change how it gets done. The communities and the people that want to come in want people that love this area and are willing to invest in it. If they don't want to invest in it, then why do they come? At the end, the community is the one that pays for the infrastructure. We got a community that has been blighted for almost 20 years, and we haven't done anything with it. Yet it was the center of the organizations that we needed to work with, businesses. And we were promised that that area would be completed. What are they doing for that? They're building brand-new schools up north, but in the south, we can't build one, other than the high school. So, please, slow down. Bring it to more conversation before you make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you. In the back, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Renee Bullock. I was a former city councilman. I was a councilman through that timeline that David Foster put up. I was on council all the years except for two. And when you stop and think about what was just said, I'm sure the person had good intentions, but he was totally confused about what he was saying because we never had any intentions of putting 160,000 people out here by 2020. The timeline was 2050. And so, I want you as council to realize that a lot of people get up and say a lot of things that at the time, they really truly believe are true in their mind. But it, they, it's not true. I was here through every aspect of this. I was on council in 2007, 2010, 11, 12, 13, 15, 16, 17. I went off council in 17 because I was term limited. I'm now running for mayor, and I see this project as a good and viable project to kickstart the development on the east side of E-470. If it doesn't come now, when is it going to come? And if they, and they are investing their own money. When they say they're going to invest over $6 million of their own money, they have skin in the game. So, I would request, when you look at this, you look at it from a positive point and grant them their, all the, whatever it is that they want. Because basically, they're doing us a favor, you know, by starting development on the east side of E-470, and it can only move west from there. And if they're going to do the infrastructure, that's a favor to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, thank you for all of the input.
Mayor Ford?
Yes.
Instead of closing the public hearing tonight, if you wanted to entertain a motion to continue it to September 16th, that would be an option if there was additional.
I was going to go over some of the options. So, tonight, we don't have anything to vote on as of yet. But we do have the opportunity to continue this public hearing. Or, we can close the public hearing and proceed to the next item unless the council wants to discuss terms of proposed annexation agreement in an executive session now or at the end of the meeting. I want to make that clear to the council. And for the audience, as to not confuse them, I think I need to say a few things about what's before us and what has happened. I, too, was here from the beginning, 1999, and I watched Reba run that campaign for growth within our community. There was nothing north really of 88th Avenue in Commerce City. It was the Water District, Water District, the city, and United Power entered into an agreement to do a GID. And it was the first general improvement district that the city had seen. Residents at that time voted that they wanted to grow as a community. And so, from that step on, the GID was approved. And that GID was specifically to finance public infrastructure, water and sewer lines up north to be able to open up that area for development opportunities. Hence then, you started seeing all these developments. Start out with Eagle Creek, River Run, and Fontara, and on up to Shea and their development with Reunion. And... And then there was a need to enhance the opportunity for development along E470. And the E470 residential GID was initiated to be able to help fund infrastructure for non-commercial-related infrastructure for that development along E470. And then there was the E470 commercial GID, which was also there as a financing mechanism to help bring infrastructure to that area for development opportunities. And so the whole intent over the years, and yes, there was a downturn in '06, '07, '08. Prior to that, Commerce City was building about 1,800 homes a year. Since that downturn and during the downturn, it was in the less than 100 up to a couple hundred homes a year maximum until about 2011. We are averaging about 700 homes a year now, and we have to keep it down for a few different factors. One factor is to be able to allow our residents to, or our planning department to be able to keep up with that type of development. And I'm doing my best to walk through how things happen, and I'm watching my attorney going, be careful you don't prejudge this case. So I got you, Robert. It's okay, I'm not going to cross that line, all right? But it's important to the residents to know how things have progressed. When that airport went into, went into place, there were people worried about their emus laying eggs. And we dealt and still deal with airport noise, and there's a lot of different factors that play a role. However, I too went to some of the ACED National Site Selector, the breakfast, I was there with Steve and at one of the after-hours pieces. And I will tell you what the National Site Selectors coming from all over this country came in to our community and said. That if you want to land jobs, you want those commercial pieces, you have to have shovel-ready ground. That's what they said. You have to make opportunity for those places when an Amazon or a Samsung or something wants to come here. They're not looking for something where they're going to spend years to try to get infrastructure in place to be able to develop. However, there's another piece of this that the city council has that they have to mull over, and that is what that investment is and what can we do with that money if this doesn't happen? And what, how much more residential do we need to attract commercial? We have a lot of things on our plate concerning how this process works. So from that perspective, the council has a lot to mull over, and I want you all just to be respective of that fact that it's not just whether we develop or don't develop or whether this is a good deal or not a good deal. I think there's a lot the council has to consider. You heard people talk about schools and farms, and there's a lot that has to be talked about. I would love to give you my position on this, but because I'm hoping to continue this hearing or to deal with it in one of the other manners tonight, that I will wait until this hearing is closed, one way or the other, to give my opinion. All right, now, back to the council. You guys all have in front of you what your options are. Mr. Madera? Oh, you have a question? Just one second, Mr. Madera. Go ahead, Mr. Douglas, for a question.
Could I ask David Foster another question?
Yes, you can.
David, I have a question for you. I'm looking at the presentation and I saw, and then where the property is split, you had two sequences going on here. And just within that U shape, there's a community and someone came to speak. When you had your neighborhood meeting, did anyone come from that community and attend?
Yeah, thanks for asking. I was wondering if more people were going to come tonight. We had about 20 people show up, and we actually had three or four residents show up to the Planning Commission just two weeks ago. And we spent some time after the hearing talking with them. I think there, here was what I think one of their biggest issues is, and I'm certainly not going to speak for all of them. One of the big issues was, was a concern that if we are building water infrastructure within close proximity to their property, whether or not South Adams will mandate that they have to join that water district. And I've done my own independent research of that question. I believe the answer to that is no. That the water district doesn't have the authority to mandate that they must hook on to that water system. That was a big deal. Another big deal, if I can share with you some of the comments from Planning Commission, was there's that road that kind of goes, it's the north-south road, that if it continued up, it would abut, it would run kind of immediately adjacent to a number of their backyards. And there was concern, are we planning on building it? The answer is no. We don't own the property upon which that, that road would exist. If and when that property owner who hasn't shown up to these meetings wants to develop, I suppose they would come into the city if they want to annex, and there would be a conversation about where that road goes. But that's not a part of this conversation. We're not, you know, advocating for that road to, you know, continue in a northerly trajectory. I think the biggest issue that we dealt with was moving Himalaya offline and moving it to the east. That was a pretty significant accommodation. And, you know, kudos to the staff for working with us to accommodate your county residents on that. And that's probably why they're not here in large numbers, because we sought to accommodate many of their issues.
Okay, another question too. On, let's see, within that property, where those homes are, residential homes are, I can see on the map, there's two oil collectors, I don't know if it's produced water and produced oil. Are those active wells?
On our property?
No, on the property where the lady just came up from their residential area.
I don't know the answer to that.
And then I know there's proposed drilling sites. Are there any within the boundary of property?
Not that we're annexing. We haven't had, we haven't identified a site, we haven't finished our negotiations with extraction. Look, we, we, we and you, we all live in a post-Senate Bill 181 world, so things have changed as it relates to oil and gas operations and setbacks and, you know, regulating the site. So we'll have to accommodate, you know, all of those new regulations, as will the oil and gas producer.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
I'd like to move to continue the meeting or the hearing to the September 16th meeting.
I have a motion to continue this hearing to September 16th. Mr. Davis.
One second.
A motion and a second to continue the hearing to September 16th. Is there any discussion from the council? Saying none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I didn't hear that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Five in favor of continuing, three opposed to continuing. Motion is carried. This hearing will be continued to September 16th. Thank you all for coming and commenting and presenting. All right, that takes us into our next public hearing. Reunion Metropolitan District Service Plans. Tonight's second public hearing will be a consolidated public hearing for resolutions 2019-81 through 2019-85 regarding five service plans proposed by Oakwood Homes for the formation of 16 new metropolitan districts in the Reunion subdivision. I will remind the council to use the public hearing only to ask questions, but not to express opinions or indicate how you will vote. I'm going to go ahead and open that public hearing now and invite the staff forward to make their presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Ford, and members of the city councils. My pleasure to present to you this evening service plans for the following metro plan districts. That's Metro District 111-19 for Reunion Village, Metro District numbers 1 through 5. Metro District 1112-19, that's for Reunion Center, Metro District numbers 1 through 5. Metro District 113-19, Reunion Sports Entertainment and Cultural Metro District. Metro District 114-19, Reunion Ridge, Metro District numbers 1 through 4. And Metro District 115-19, Reunion Natural Source Metro District. The applicant requesting the Reunion Metro Districts is Clayton Properties Group 2, Inc., also known as Oakwood Homes. They are proposing 16 new districts. This will supplement existing Title 32 districts, Reunion Metro District North, excuse me, Reunion Metro District North range numbers 1 through 5. All districts are proposed to be formed within the city limits of Commerce City. Estimated public improvement cost total $373,592,870. Total debt issuance limit in service plans is $433,225,000. Tonight's presentation will review a purpose of metropolitan districts and the council's action tonight. It will discuss common service plan elements and review each of the proposed service plans. Metropolitan districts are government entities created to provide services for an area, typically financing and construction, constructing infrastructure needed for development and operations and maintenance. Service plans define and limit district functions, powers, and revenue. Districts must comply with Tabor, the Colorado Open Records Act, and Opens Meetings Law, as well as Title 32. District revenue is derived from property taxes and fees, subject to the service plan. District debt is not an obligation of the city and does not impact the city's budget. Commerce City uses a model service plan that has been modified to address applicant requests and other updates. City council action is needed to proceed with the formation of the districts. The city council may approve with conditions or disapprove of the service plan. If council must disapprove of a service plan unless satisfactory evidence is presented showing sufficient existing and projected need for organized service, existing service is inadequate for present and projected needs. Proposed district is capable of providing economic and sufficient service. Area to be included has or will have financial ability to discharge the proposed indebtedness on a reasonable basis. This is derived from Colorado Revia Statute 31-1-203, Part 2, Subsection 2, 04.5. So common service plan elements within the Reunion Metro service plans, and I will just note the first, establishing general powers, including constructing improvements and operation of parks and landscaping. And I'd like to note that on the right, you'll see that there's a reference that's located for each of the service plans. This is Roman Newble 5, or Article 5, so, chapter or subsection A. I'm not going to read each one of these as I go through that if it would please the council. Excuse me. So the secondly, debt issuance limit based on explicit formula. Mill levy caps with adjustment, and this excludes the Natural Resource Metro District. The service plans would allow imposition of fees. Reimbursement agreements cannot include compounding interest. Fairness depending on interest rate. This does require city council approval for modification, use of eminent domain, and certain inclusions and exclusions, and authorizes district activities. Additional common service plan elements include disclosure to initial purchasers, and that would be of impact of a mill levy and fees on residential properties, and through developers and home builders with purchase, contract, and recording document. The service plans also include disclosure to potential residential buyers of mill levy and fees and taxes, and through developers, home builders to provide at sales offices. Service plans require board meetings to be held within the city. They require statutory annual notice to be mailed to property owners by January 31st of each year. It requires an annual report to be provided to the city and recording statement regarding taxes and debts. And jumping into the first metro district, just to give you an idea of this area, this is for Metro District 111-9. This is Reunion Village, Metro District numbers 1 through 5. It's approximately 476 acres and is located north of 104th Avenue. It's on the west side of Chambers Road, but includes one portion here in the northeast corner, excuse me, the southeast corner of Chambers Road and East 112th Avenue. The remainder of the district will be south of East 112th Avenue, and it exists east of Potomac Street. So for Reunion Village, it's a consolidated service plan for five districts, anticipated to include, again, approximately 475 acres. That would be for residential and commercial use. This would include approximately 1,565 homes and 100,000 square feet of commercial space. Estimated improvements cost is $85,596,616. The debt issuance limit is $93,956,250. The maximum combined mill levy is 88.541 mills. The maximum debt mill levy is 63.541 mills. The maximum operation and maintenance mill levy is 25 mills. This is subject to a mill levy adjustment from January 2019. The organizational cost of this district is $150,000. Their first-year operating budget is $50,000. The applicant's financial plan in Exhibit F finds sufficient property tax and other revenues to discharge their proposed indebtedness. Moving forward to proposed Metro District 112-19, this is approximately 432 acres. This area lies west of E470, south of East 112th Avenue, east of the future High Plains Parkway, and east of Walden Street, and north of East 104th Avenue, which excludes the Walmart property in the southwest corner of that area. So for Reunion Center, Metro District's numbers 1 through 5, it's a consolidated service plan. Five districts anticipated to include, again, 432 acres of commercial and residential use. This would include approximately 2,165 homes and approximately half a million square feet of commercial space. This inclusion area overlaps with the next district that I will discuss. The estimated improvement cost is $156,965,913. The debt issuance limit is $171,037,000. The maximum combined mill levy is 88.541 mills. Maximum debt mill levy will be 63.541 mills. Their maximum O and M mill levy is 25 mills. Their organizational cost, similar to the previous district, $150,000. Their first-year operating budget will be $50,000. And as, similar to the first district, the applicant's financial plan in Exhibit F finds sufficient property tax and other revenues to discharge proposed indebtedness. So moving forward to Metro District 113-9, again, this is 432 acres. This is an overlap of the previous Reunion Center Metro District. It includes essentially the same boundary as that property. So for the Reunion Sports Entertainment and Cultural Metro District, this is a service plan for one district, anticipated to include and intended to serve, intended to serve with financing and operation of sports, entertainment, and cultural venues and related infrastructure. The metro district anticipates a city partnership and the future authority. An inclusion of this district overlaps, again, with the Reunion Center District. Estimated improvement cost is $72,111,913. The debt issuance limit is zero until authority is created, service plan, or the service plan is amended. The maximum combined mill levy will be 25 mills for operation and maintenance until the authority is created. Public improvement fee is authorized under the service plan. Organizational costs, similar to the first two districts, $150,000, with the first-year operating budget being $50,000. And similar to the first two, applicant's financial plan in Exhibit F finds sufficient property tax and other revenues to discharge proposed indebtedness. For the fourth proposed metro district, MD-114-19, this comprises 669 acres for Reunion Ridge. And just the outline of the boundary of this property, this is East 96th Avenue, the Wildlife Arsenal just to the south. You can see that the property includes portions south of unincorporated Adams Properties, east of, excuse me, west of Chambers Road, and extending over to Potomac, then large portions of property that are west of Potomac, and snaking around basically back down to the south towards East 96th Avenue, all being aligned with east of Peoria Street. This This metro district does include portions of the first metro district, what we call Village Eight, and a portion of what we call Village Seven here on the southeast and southwest corners of Chambers and 112th Avenue. So, for Reunion Ridge Metro Districts, this is four districts, anticipated to include, again, six hundred and ninety-six, six hundred and sixty-nine acres, excuse me, for residential use only, and this will include approximately twenty-six hundred homes. Estimated improvement cost is a hundred and thirty-one million, thirty thousand and three hundred and forty-one dollars. The debt issuance limit is a hundred and forty-one million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The maximum combined mill levy, again, eighty-eight point five four one mils, with the maximum debt mill levy of sixty-three point five four one mils. Their maximum O and M mill levy will be twenty-five mils. The public improvement fee is authorized under the service plan. The organizational cost, similar to the first four districts, or, excuse me, the first three districts, are a hundred and fifty thousand, with the first year operating budget of fifty thousand. Similar to the first three districts, the financial plan included in Exhibit F finds sufficient property tax and other revenues to discharge proposed indebtedness. And finally, the fifth metro district, MD-115-19, this comprises a twenty-four acre portion of the Reunion Ridge development, the Reunion Natural Resource Metro District. Here's east 96th Avenue and Potomac Street. This property, this area lies just west of the intersection with Potomac and 96th Avenue, and this is the southwest corner of what is proposed as Reunion Ridge. This is a service plan for one district, twenty-four acres to include oil and gas wells, intended to provide financing with improvements for reunion. The estimated improvement cost is three hundred and seventy-three million, five hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars. This mirrors the improvements cost for Reunion Ridge, Reunion Village, and Reunion Center districts. The debt issuance limit is twenty-six million, six hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The maximum mill levy will be fifty mils. Their organizational cost, a hundred and fifty thousand, first year operating budget, fifty thousand, similar to the all first four districts. And again, their Exhibit F provided finds sufficient property tax and other revenues to discharge proposed indebtedness. The metro district review criterion, in order for the council to approve the service plans, you must find that there is sufficient existing and projected need for organized service in the area to be serviced by the proposed special district. The existing service in the area to be served by the proposed special district is inadequate for present and projected needs. The proposed special district is capable of providing economical and sufficient service to the area within its proposed boundaries, and that the area to be included in the proposed special district has or will have the financial ability to discharge the proposed indebtedness on a reasonable basis. For staff review, the proposed service plans appear to contain the information required by Colorado Revised Statute 32-1-202, Part II, and to support a determination that the requirements of Colorado Revised Statutes 32-1-203, Part II, are met based on the applicant's submissions, and the applicant will present additional supporting information and financial analysis. That concludes my presentation. Before council, I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council?
Mayor Ford.
Or the staff? Yes, sir.
Before there are questions, may I just note one error that I believe I included in the presentation. The public improvement fee would be authorized for reunion center and the reunion sports, entertainment, and cultural district, not reunion ridge. I think the presentation was inactive in that regard. But I also wanted to note that both I and the city's special counsel for metro districts, Monica Rosenbluth, are present this evening if council has questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the staff after that presentation? Mr. Teeter?
Prime Minister.
Saying none. The applicant is present. I ask you to come forward and add to the presentation if you have anything to add.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. My name is Kelly Lee. I reside or I work at 4908 Tower Road, Denver, Colorado. I'm here as the executive vice president of operations for Oakwood Homes, and we were here a couple of weeks ago to give you a general informational overview of the proposed districts, and tonight we're going to give you some additional detail as we proceed this evening. Real quickly, and I should note, we have members of our team here, both legal counsel, Jim Hayes, who's leading up the project on our end. We have folks from DA Davidson as well to answer questions, so I think, I'm hopeful that we have the right folks here to answer your questions, and if we don't, certainly have the answer, we'll get it for you. Just a quick overview, and again, some of these slides are repetitive from the other night, so we'll move through those pretty quickly, but I think it provides important context to the work that we're doing in and around reunion as a regional asset. So, again, we'll dive into the specifics, and that's really the meat of tonight's discussions about each of the individual districts, and Jim will cover a lot of that, as well as the legal construct for the districts. And again, just a couple highlights. So, this is, gives you an overview of reunion, twenty-five hundred acres. It is, it was put in motion almost twenty years ago with the city and the Full and Wyder family, and ultimately Shay Holmes, who was the master developer up until two years ago, but really bold vision. And again, I love to take people back to the fact that if you go back twenty years and you were to stand roughly where the lake is and the rec center, this was a dry land wheat farm, right, with, with strong agricultural uses. So, you know, you fast forward to today, and even with the bump in the road of the recession, there's been an enormous amount of progress made in fulfilling the bold vision that the Full and Wyders, the city, and Shay put in motion for Commerce City. And so, when we took over, when Oakwood took over two years ago, it's twenty-four months, actually, as of this last Saturday, there were a little over two thousand homes built and occupied. It was ultimately originally approved for over fifteen thousand home sites. You know, we think that number's going to be closer to probably a little over ten, but, you know, it was less than, it was about thirteen percent of the community was built out when Oakwood stepped in a couple of years ago. And obviously, in that very short amount of time, a lot has happened, and really, tonight's conversation is about finishing what was started. And these districts are an important part of that construct of putting in motion the infrastructure we need in order to finish the community that was ultimately promised years ago. This slide just touches on the original districts that were approved when Shay was the developer. We have reunion district, North Range One, North Range One Subdistrict, North Range Two, North Range Subdistrict Two, and then Three, and then Four and Five are located south. The intent is those are located south, and Shay retained control of those two districts for future commercial development. So, what you see in front of you was predominantly around building that initial infrastructure. Examples of that are the rec center, the fifty-two acre Central Park, the lakes, the roadway systems, the dry and wet utilities that were required to build the core part of reunion, and obviously, what we'll call the core or the heart of the community around that Central Park. What we are proposing is, again, to finish out, putting in motion districts that will allow us, along with other builders that we'll bring on as third-party builders, to have a diversified product mix across the span, the rest of the span of the community. And Brad walked through with some level of detail, and we'll go into a little more each of these villages and what those represent. Now, I'm going to turn it over to council, Kristin Baer, who will talk about some of the legal constructs.
Good evening, council members. Kristin Baer, law firm of White Bear and Ankle, and we represent the petitioners for each of these districts. So, I'm just going to go through some special district information on a general basis for you, and then we'll get back to the presentation with respect to each of the special districts that are being proposed on a specific basis. So, special districts, they're quasi-governmental entities, just as the city and other entities that are formed within the state. They operate as governments, essentially constrained by Title 32 of the Colorado Revised Statutes. So, unlike the city, we do have a constraint called a service plan, and that is what is before you tonight with respect to each of those districts. Districts are organized in order to provide the infrastructure that's necessary to facilitate development. They also can provide services to those developments, such as operations and maintenance. They are also authorized to provide things like covenant control as an alternative to an HOA. Largely, though, they operate as a financing vehicle in order to ensure that development can pay its own way. So, in the past, we often had cities and counties providing infrastructure and financing that infrastructure. Now, we have special districts, and the financing is concentrated in the area that constitutes the legal boundaries of that district, such that those residents pay their own way for purposes of the public infrastructure that they're going to benefit from. It is not spread over the entire county or the entire city. Right now, there are over fifteen hundred metropolitan districts that exist in the state of Colorado, and it's very rare that you see either a commercial or residential development being completed or facilitated at this point in time without a metropolitan district helping. Special districts, again, they serve as an entity that can provide tax-exempt financing for the public infrastructure. And as governmental entities, again, there are hoarded governmental powers and privileges through Title 32. So, Title 32 provides some very broad authorization. The service plan can constrain that. So, as we have presented to you tonight some service plans for these metropolitan districts, we have various constraints, specifically financial constraints, that are applicable to the proposed districts. So, again, the special districts are governments. Their boards of directors meet on a regular basis to handle business of the special district. That's subsequent to their organization, of course. Special districts often engage professionals to help manage the districts. Again, because they are governmental entities, they engage professionals such as accountants, engage legal, and other persons such as auditors. Districts are required to get audits on an annual basis. They have to hold open meetings with due notice to members of the public. Your service plan additionally requires that all meetings of the special districts be held within the city boundaries, within a twenty-mile radius of those districts. They also must be open to the public pursuant to your service plan. Districts do maintain minutes of all meetings and other records open for public inspection. So, just as the city is constrained by open records and public meeting laws, districts are likewise held to those regulations. They have to adopt annual meetings or annual budgets at public hearings. Those are generally done at the end of the year in order to certify mill levies and property taxes. Those property taxes have to be certified not later than December 15th, which is why you see those budget matters being considered at the end of the year. They also have to submit to annual financial audits if the financial activities meet certain So, relative to districts' financial authorization, their financial authorization and powers are derived under Title 32. So, again, Title 32 is the broad base for purposes of providing districts authorization. The service plan can constrain those activities and the financial authorization. So, an example of that would be in your service plan, we have a number of financial constraints that are applicable to these districts. There is a debt authorization constraint or limit that is derived by a specific formula that is in your model service plan. There are mill levy caps, both for purposes of operation as well as debt authorization. There is a limitation on the duration in which that debt mill levy may be imposed by the districts. So, we have a number of financial constraints that are applicable to these proposed districts as set forth as part of your model service plan. The final financial constraint that's applicable to districts is set forth by Tabor. Normally, when we organize a district, we will not only vote on the organization of a district and the initial board of directors, but we will also authorize that district to impose taxes and issue debt as constrained by the service plan in order to get that Tabor authorization, so the district can finance the public improvements. Title 32 grants special districts the powers to do a number of different things. So, districts are authorized to levy and collect property taxes. This would be for purposes of both financing public improvements or capital improvements, as well as operating and maintaining those improvements. They can fix and increase fees for purposes of providing services to their residents. They can also impose rates, tolls, penalties, and charges for those services. In order to finance public improvements, districts are generally authorized in Title 32 to issue what we call general obligation bonds. Those are bonds that are supported by property taxes, and sometimes you'll hear the expression, limited general obligation bonds, which in this case would be applicable to these districts because they do have a mill levy cap. So, in the case of a limited general obligation bond, it is limited as to an amount of property taxes that would be levied by a district. They can also issue revenue bonds for purposes of financing. Again, I would point out that the authorizing jurisdiction, in this case, the city, is not responsible for any debt or obligation of the underlying special district. So, just very quickly, I'd like to point out that we have worked vigorously with staff. There is a lot of paperwork and a lot of reviewing that has gone into the service plans that are before you tonight, and I'd like to thank staff for all of the work that they did in regard to this. It was very quick, it was fast, it was furious, and a lot of documentation. The service plans are in compliance with the model. We have addressed comments received by staff, as well as your city council and special council. Publication and notice of tonight's hearings for each of the various service plans was made pursuant to the city requirements, as well as statute. So, published notice was made on July 30th in the Commerce City Sentinel, and we've mailed notice to the underlying property owners within each of the boundaries of the district, as well as taxing entities within a three-mile radius of those districts on July 20, or 29th, 2019. We have not received any objections to date, and we believe the service plans are in compliance with both the model as well as all statutory requirements. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jim Hayes, just to talk a little bit about each of the districts.
Thank you, mayor, members of council. Jim Hayes, Oakwood Homes, 4908 Tower Road, Denver. Brad did a great job of orienting you to the various districts. I'm not going to spend a lot of time showing you the boundaries here, but in general, I just want to walk through each one of these and show you the amount of debt authorization, and then really what we're planning for our initial debt authorization, and what we're planning for the initial round of funding for each of these, and the major public improvements that we need to complete in each of these villages. So, the first one is Reunion Village, also known as Village Eight, Metro Districts one through five. Again, this is bordered by 104th on the south, 112th on the north, Chambers on the east, and generally Potomac and Blackhawk on the west. I did want to point out something that Brad had mentioned. The area in, around Chambers, on the southeast corner of that intersection, as well as the southwest side, we are showing those in either this district or the Reunion Ridge district. It's probably going to be one of the last neighborhoods we develop in the community, so we want to provide ourselves some flexibility going forward. Again, the initial debt issuance here is around ninety-three million dollars. We have estimated improvement costs around eighty-five million, four hundred and seventy-six acres, around thirteen hundred commercial, residential units, and about a hundred thousand square feet of commercial on 104th. Again, highlighting some of the major improvements that will be required here, there's a large community amenity for the active adult neighborhood we have planned. There's extensive off-site road improvements, as you can see on this graphic, as well as this is a neighborhood south of Second Creek that will be private streets and gated. So, there'll be a lot of long-term operations and maintenance required to those streets since they will more than likely be private streets and not maintained by the city. They will be built to a public standard, of course, but probably not necessarily maintained by the city. So, again, the financing is based on some projections based on these numbers that the development would occur between 2022 and 2027. The commercial date is 2023 in our plan, and we'd like to have that faster if we can, of course. It'll be market-driven. We believe the revenues, again, that are supporting the district debt that are anticipated will support the mill levy of the sixty-three point five four one, as well as the will support the mill levy of the 63.541, as well as the operating mill. We also have a $3,000 residential facility fee, which we do at the time of building permit. This is a one-time fee that would be applied to each home. We're also proposing a 2% public improvement fee for the commercial district. That, of course, would be required to have a future agreement between the district and the city to impose that fee. So, as you noticed there, we have our mill levy authorization, or excuse me, the debt authorization up to $93, $94 million, but we are planning on initial authorization of $75 million, which would support a net of about $63 million in infrastructure. And again, these are only $20,19, as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, these will probably, construction costs will go up over time, of course. Reunion Ridge, moving south of 104th. Again, this is bordered by 104th on the north, 96th on the south, Chambers on the east there, on the far east, and then generally, the development is occurring between Revere and Potomac for the most part. Again, a debt issuance limit here of $141 million with improvement costs of $131 million. 669 acres, I wanted to point out that the Reunion Ridge plan you see in front of you is around 510 acres, and so this acreage includes those other two villages up north near 112th Avenue, as I mentioned. We do have 2,600 residential units planned in Reunion Ridge alone, and there are substantial improvements that need to be funded to make this development possible. Most notably are regional drainage facilities, which will not only benefit this project, but also Turnberry, Aberdeen, Points Downstream, working very closely with the Public Works Department to come up with some regional solutions that will help everybody. Ragweed draw construction, which traverses through what is shown as Phase 1 there. That is a draw that needs to be rebuilt, essentially. It's, I mentioned this before, it's about an inch deep and a mile wide. It really doesn't exist at this point, so there's a lot of excavation and import of dirt that we'll be doing to make that happen. Arterial and collector roads, just for example, you see Potomac coming down from the north and kind of snaking down to the south and west. That will be a major collector road, which, again, will serve as another great access point between Chambers and Highway 2 that will be funded by this district. There are gas line relocations that traverse diagonally through the site. It's pretty apparent where that's going, from the northwest to the southeast. We're working closely with XL. The first phase of that is under design right now, but the first-phase relocation alone is around $2 million, and there'll be an additional cost of another $2 or $3 million to get the rest of that completed. Also working with XL on electric and gas line crossings, as you can see, the right-of-way goes right through the north end of this community, and we've got to cross under the power lines, provide adequate spacing and landscaping so they can potentially put in more towers at some point in the future. And there are, of course, gas lines in there as well that we need to cross over. A community amenity will also be part of this to provide an additional amenity for this neighborhood, recognizing that the South Lawn Pool can't serve everybody, the rec center can't serve everybody, and that this community will also need its own amenity. And I think it's also important to note that the area shown as PA 16 is a combination school and park site, which is right out of the city's comprehensive plan. This will be site-ready as part of that development, so it'll be infrastructure right to that property so that the city can develop a neighborhood park. 27J will be ready to go with a school site once we get the infrastructure down there. And again, we are in the process right now of entitling this property for that first filing, so we actually anticipate the first, probably 400 or 500 homes would start construction in 2021, but it is a long build-out, so you see that goes through 2033 in our financing plan. We have the same mill levy, and in addition, then we have that $3,000 residential facility fee. The initial debt we're proposing to issue is around $113 million, which would net around $90 for public infrastructure. Again, based on the service plan, the debt authorization we're requesting is $141 million. Reunion Center, Brad did, again, a great job of explaining what we're doing in this area. You can see that the Reunion Center Metro District will cover not only the residential and commercial areas, but also the sports, entertainment, and cultural districts. So, the infrastructure that is being funded by Reunion Center is going to be the horizontal infrastructure, and then the sports, entertainment, and cultural district, which Kelly will talk about in a minute, is going to fund the vertical infrastructure. So, I want to make that distinction, that this is the horizontal for the mill levy. There'll be revenue bonds for the vertical infrastructure. And again, this is E470 on the east, 112th on the north, and 104th on the south. So, we have $170 million debt limit. Estimated improvements right now is $156 million. We have 432 acres in total, 2,100 home sites, as well as around 500,000 square feet of commercial. Major improvements in this area, again, include High Plains Parkway, which is the Tower Road running to the north and west to line up with the new Buckley alignment. 112th Avenue, the final phase that we need to build from High Plains over to 470. Again, a lot of regional drainage facilities. For those of you that remember some of the challenges on Tower Road with the drainage, this ties into the infamous T-88 line, which runs under 470, so we've got to make a lot of improvements up there on kind of north of the ball fields. And then substantial pedestrian improvements to really make this an interconnected neighborhood and not let it be bisected by High Plains Parkway. We're even looking at things like possibly an underpass at 106th Avenue or Homestead Trail to try to get people from the west to the east through the property. And again, this map I wanted to show tonight because it does show how we're trying to land-plan this thing. You can see that the yellow is the commercial at varying densities, the red, excuse me, the yellow is residential at varying densities, the red is the commercial, and then the kind of purple is the sports and entertainment district. Again, the infrastructure will benefit all three of these areas as we're developing. And just a quick summary, again, we also have the 63 mills here, the $3,000 residential facility fee, a public improvement fee of 2% of sales. And we are planning on the village plan coming in, it's in this fall. We're hoping to get started with a lot of the amenities, as we've talked about, the charter school, the library, et cetera, in 2021, and Kelly's going to have a lot more details on that. The debt we're anticipating would be $136 million, netting $108 for infrastructure. And again, the model service plan shows a debt limit of $170 million. Turn it over to Kelly now to finish up for us. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Jim and Kristen. So, I'm going to just touch on the reunion sports, entertainment, and cultural district. Again, this is an overlay district with a real focus really between 104th and 108th. And this slide here kind of begins to describe or outline for you aspects, conceptual aspects of the reunion sports, entertainment, and cultural district. And so, I think it's probably appropriate to give you an example of what the reunion sports, entertainment, and cultural district is. So, if you think about, and Kristen talked about Title 32, so an example I would cite that's, I think, well-known in this state is, many, many years ago, the state passed a law to create the Metropolitan Football Stadium District. It's made up of seven counties. Each of those counties have representatives that sit on a board. That board oversees Mile High Stadium on behalf of the taxpayers, and then they have an operator in the Broncos through their stadium management company that is responsible for that facility. So, in a lot of respects, the sports, entertainment, and cultural district follows a very similar model, and the intent there is that we partner with the city to create and stand up and overlay an authority which acts as the kind of operating entity over a taxing authority, right? And again, and I think this is a really important distinction for the reunion sports, entertainment, and cultural district, although there is mill levies, property tax mill levies used for the horizontal, the intent for the vertical, so that is the fieldhouse, the ice house, the baseball, softball, multipurpose facilities, and some of the, and the Grange is an example as well, is that we are going to use revenue bonds to fund a lot of that, those improvements. So, how do you generate revenue? Well, the, and I'll use baseball and softball as an example. Again, with these facilities, we would have an operating partner that will attract very high-end adult and youth sporting events. Those visitors will come from all over the country, stay in hotels, spend retail dollars here, they will pay tournament fees, and the intent is the authority will collect those dollars for the dollars spent within this authority, and then pay the revenue bonds as part of the debt. So, this is a user-pay model that's used all over the country. But what's unique about Reunion, and I really applaud, and I build on the last presenter's presentation, is this region of Commerce City, obviously, given its proximity to the airport, its proximity to Gaylord, and the growth that's happening up Tower Road with hotels is coming this way, is that we are using sports as a way to accelerate commercial and retail development. So, we're not going to wait for those rooftops, and the intent is to create its own marketplace here to drive some of these things. And we will start with, and you're actually, the public has seen this for this updated site plan for the first time, is the school, the high school that we've submitted our charter application to 27J, used to be on the east side of Tower Road, where, just to the north of where the fieldhouse and ice house is. After lots of conversations with the library district and our planning team and the community, we've moved the school now west of Tower Road, and it's on a shared site with what we hope to be the future library site, and anything is advancing on a shared 17-acre site. The school makes up about 10 of that. We will actively begin planning that school through Oakwood's Educational Foundation called Build Strong Foundation that will advance those funds, along with the Reunion Community Foundation, with the intent that we hope to see an approval from the school district, hopefully around Thanksgiving of this year, if not by the end of the year. But we're going to advance planning with the goal of opening the first phase of that high school to 165 students in fall of 2021. And then, you know, there's been a lot of talk about the library district, going back to the voters, I think they're in deliberations about whether they do that, but we've been working very collaborative with them to make this very, very dynamic site that brings a library and a school to this community. And then the first phase of sporting facilities that would be built as part of the Reunion Center would be the ball fields of baseball, softball, and multipurpose fields, along with an indoor training center east of, again, Tower Road. And again, another point that I would make that David Foster made so well is, you know, we have ready infrastructure now. There were millions of dollars spent to prepare, the site where the logos, where it says Reunion Center, that was planned for the Walmart site. Walmart is disposing of that property, about 34 acres, but as part of preparing for that Walmart, infrastructure, dry and wet utilities were put in place, roads were put in place. If you go out there today, there are street signs out there, there are fire hydrants, there are striped roads. I mean, it is ready for development. So, we are going to leverage that ready development to accelerate and get ready for the first phase of the sports facilities, and those, and then the balance of the site will build out in collaboration with the city over time. Again, these are slides that you saw last time, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on them, but it starts to show we have spent a lot of time thinking about a phasing plan for how you do this in a pragmatic and fiscally responsible way. So, the Phase 1 will be in three parts, A, B, and C, around the year-round facilities, and there's lots of detail here. We've started to think through our operating partners and what happens first, but the first step in this part of the development is moving a whole bunch of dirt to prepare the site for development. This gives you an estimate of the costs for these facilities. So, again, they're estimated costs based on like facilities from around the country. We're working with a local sports architectural firm that has national numbers. So, these, this gives you a sense we have about just under $70 million in facilities that would be built, again, over time, with the pool, the waterhouse being the most expensive of all the facilities, and the multipurpose field being the least expensive. But the idea here is a collaboration with the city for year-round use, not just for visitors, but how do we have these facilities benefit all of Commerce City, rec sports, be it youth and adult. But this gives you a good sense of our cost model, and then equally important is a revenue model. And again, this is illustrative around predominantly the baseball and softball facilities. There's a whole variety of revenue streams that will be captured by the authority, both for invitational events as well as recreational use over the course of a year. So, this shows you, you know, if you add up all these, it's about 1.7 million that would be collected annually on the baseball, softball, and multipurpose facilities. That translates into about anywhere from $9 to $12 million in debt capacity, that, which is right on target with what we would need in place to build the baseball, softball facilities. And as we add more facilities, these numbers start to compound on one another because you're driving more visitors to the site. Obviously, one of the things that, you know, we really, we've had a long conversations with the city team, and again, I would be remiss if I did not say thank you to Brian and his team, the planning department, the attorney's office. We've had a very collaborative conversation, and it's been our intent, as well as the city's intent, to be very pragmatic about how we do this. So, the intent is that we are going to restrict the ability to issue debt at this time. We've got to come back with a more detailed plan, and it's got to stand on its own merits, which, you know, as a former public official, I think that's an important aspect, that it's got to stand before you as council members and say this makes sense financially. So, that's the intent, and we're very supportive of that approach. And then we do have an overlay of up to 25 mills for some common area maintenance that will, again, maintain these facilities and the sites at a very high level. But again, that will be part of a plan, successive plans that we come back to the city on to show what the actual costs would be. Now, we're going to pivot to the Natural Resource District. Again, this is located in Village 9, or what we call the Reunion Ridge Development. The intent here is, again, in today's environment, there are multiple either existing or proposed well sites that were planned for and across the 2,500 acres of Reunion as one example. In the Reunion Center, there are four wells there today, and the intent is pretty simple, is it's a consolidation of all those wells from a dispersed system to a consolidated system down in this corner on two sides of this development. There can't be any development. You have the Arsenal to the south, or the Wildlife Refuge to the south, and the Future Reservoir to the west, and the intent, again, is to consolidate all those wellheads. And I'm happy to report, you know, we got notice from the Full and Widers the other day that the four wellheads that exist in the Reunion Center today, over the course of the next several weeks, they will start to cap those wells, pull out the flow lines. So, the agreement that we put in place a number of weeks ago is already moving forward to consolidate these operations into this one site. Then they will have a gathering line that pulls the oil from this site and then runs it down the Piesco easement and out of Reunion. And then we'll, obviously, the other benefit of this is that we will have the Metro District over the top of this and be able to collect mills and have another revenue stream to help pay for the significant amount of infrastructure that we have to develop for this community. This just gives you, it's about, it's, like I said, 24 acres that has been dedicated for this single purpose. And I should note that the district is authorized to participate in the regional infrastructure needs through the agreements that were put in place, so the dollars generated from this will support the entire community as we start to pay for that infrastructure. Again, the, I think the most important thing here is that our model, our model service plan formula, the district has permitted to issue an amount not to exceed 26, little, almost just under $27 million. And again, those dollars will be used to help support infrastructure throughout the community. And there's a cap of 50 mills on that district. Kristen, you want to join me for this, and we'll both talk about this. Obviously, one of the things that's important to all of us is the transparency of these districts. I'll just ask Kristen to talk about the legal stuff, and I'll talk about just some practical things we're doing on the transparency.
So, I think at our last presentation, there was a question about transparency, and we wanted to bring to your attention a couple of statutory considerations. So, Section 38, 35.7-101 CRS provides that there has to be notice in every contract for purchase that discloses that the property could be in the boundaries of a special district. And with regard to that, it also requires that that purchaser be put on notice as to where they can get additional information about those property taxes. Being the county treasurer's office, they can also review the certificate of taxes that they get with regard to closing information, and they can also just contact the county regard to closing information, and they can also just contact the county for purposes of getting information as to whether they're in the boundaries of a special district and whether that district imposes property taxes. Additionally, Section 1011-122 CRS requires title companies to provide the title commitment to purchasers. So that is part of the due diligence as purchasers are purchasing property. They get a title commitment. That title commitment will include information about whether you're in a district or not. It includes a recorded order of organization for every special district that you may be purchasing property in. So that shows up on your title commitment. There's also a statement disclosing that the property may be located in a special district that the title company is required to give you, and the certificate of taxes. That will tell you all of those taxing jurisdictions that your property is located in. So we'll go over this in a minute. But you may not just be in the Title 32 special district. There's also county taxes, school district taxes, and all of those taxes that overlay your property will show up on that certification of taxes. And then governing jurisdictions can require additional transparency or notices to be provided by a special district. And in the case of Commerce City, as part of your Model Service Plan, you do require additional transparency notices, not only to be provided to that initial purchaser, but also additional home buyers that purchase down the road. We are, in fact, required to do a mailed notice on an annual basis to homeowners, informing them of the district, the mill levy, and how to get additional information about the district. Kelly, you want to talk about the additional?
Sure, too. So, you know, again, as a practical matter, one of the things that we've heard over the last, you know, two years is, well, it's all great that you're providing this in this long stack of legal documents. What about that buyer that comes in, and they're buying their first home, and they're kind of overwhelmed with information? So one of the things, just by way of a lot of listening, and I brought an example, and I'm happy to get these to you, but we put together this really simple flyer that walks folks through what, you know, what the reunion metro district is. So this is when a person walks into a sales office. We're we're distributing these to all, not just Oakwood's sales offices, but all the sales offices for the builders up there. It talks about what the metro district operates, it maintains. And most importantly, it does a couple of things. One, it provides, and you can't really see this, but it it lists all the various taxes, property taxes that are paid in, if you're in reunion, the library district as an example, or the fire district as an example. And then it provides an example of your tax bill if you're home, and we used a $400,000 home as an example. But you can do a really quick, your own calculation as part of your kind of your prospective buyer research on, you know, is that something that you're comfortable with, or do you have more questions? And then the other thing we do is provide a comparative analysis of, you know, what is that investment, what are those tax dollars going to? Because we talked a lot about, this is about development paying its own way. And so what are those amenities that you're getting? And what's the comparison against other communities? So we list a variety of other communities that folks, again, can go look at, or ask questions about, so that they can make an informed buyer decision. And last but not least, we, again, reinforce other sources. And we we train our sales staff, and we encourage folks to go look at some of the other places, be it the state or other places that talk about metro districts, or the county treasurer, what have you, to make sure that they're making an informed buying decision. We're also, we continue to update, modify our sales contracts to provide the appropriate disclosures, so that we're talking to folks about not just the purchase of the home, but all the costs associated with what it means to be a homeowner. And certainly, metro district taxes are a part of that. So this is an example. And I'm like, again, I'm happy to get examples of this to council if you if you'd like.
In our last presentation, there were a couple of questions about how you calculate a mill levy, and what homeowners within the reunion master plan development will ultimately play. So I provided a little bit of information here relative to how that calculation is made. This slide only goes towards reunion taxes, just the reunion Title 32 district. And then the next slide gets into the overlapping. So as of January 2019, the assessment ratio applicable to residential homes was set at 7.15%. That's a little bit different than the prior year, at which point it was 7.2%. So for purposes of a $100,000 home, I know you asked about the average home in reunion, which is about 450, but the $100,000 is a very easy calculation. It allows us to look at various price points. So if the home is valued, market valuation of $100,000, it's going to have an assessed valuation of $7,150. That is calculated by taking the market valuation and multiplying it by the assessment ratio of 7.15%. For purposes of those residential homes in reunion, the mill levy for debt would be 63.986 mils. And for purposes of operations, it would be 24.94 mils. That is the mill levy that the reunion districts that exist today will be considering as part of their 2020 budgets. So the mill levy that is set forth in your service plan right now of 63.541, we have taken that adjustment effective as of January 2019 at the 7.15 assessment ratio. So for purposes of that $100,000 home, again, you're taking the 88.93 mils, and that home would pay $635.85 per year for every, again, every $100,000 of market valuation. So in the case of the average home at $450,000 market valuation, those property taxes would be approximately $2,860 a year paid to those reunion districts. This next slide, again, goes to total overlapping mill levy. So as Kelly indicated, in the notification that's provided at part of the sales centers, the total taxing entity information is provided to all of those potential purchasers. So in reunion, we have a total overlapping mill levy of 216 mils, .491. So for, again, for purposes of that $100,000 home, again, your assessed valuation is 7,150, and you multiply that by the 216 mils, that home is going to pay $1,547 on an annual basis. For the $450,000 market valuation home, that assessed valuation, again, is 32,175, based on that 7.15% assessment ratio. That home is going to pay just under $7,000 on an annual basis, based upon that total overlapping mill levy.
I think that we're in the homestretch here, the last slide. And this is really just kind of the close, is, you know, the language, there's lots of, like I said last time, there's lots of words on this final slide. But the objective really is language that comes right out of the master development agreement that was signed back in the early 2000s that put in motion the creation of of reunion. And and again, in the 24 months that Oakwood has been the community developer, and I use that word instead of master developer, and there's a distinction for us in what that means. It's not just about the homes, it's about all the other things that we focus on. The coffee house is an example of that. The schools we're working on. The reunion center is an example of that, is that we got to finish what was started. And so we're very focused on making sure we have a diversified product line. And and again, I think just fulfilling what was put in motion almost 18 years ago. And we feel really good about where reunion is. And I think I feel even more, even better, when you hear about the work that Cali's doing. And, you know, again, I said, and Brian will remember this, one of the first things I said to him when I started with Oakwood, I said, this is Commerce City's time, and it's this region's time. And I think, done right and done well, this region is going to really elevate all of Commerce City in a way that we can be proud of. And we're deeply humbled as a developer to be a part of it. But in order to do that, we need the tools to effectively finish what was started. So the closing points, again, you can read those yourself. But the point is, we're we're working very closely with the the staff, we're following the city's service, Model Service Plan, and we're excited to continue to roll up our sleeves with the city and and finish this wonderful community. I think that's it. You've heard enough from us. Thank you.
All right. Is there any council members that have questions for the applicant this evening?
Thank you for your presentation. I know we're going to go over each one of these as far as voting, right?
Yes, there will be a separate vote on each separate.
Let's see, I had a question on, since you brought up, it says one through five, and how many different areas now? I mean, is it 16 different ones that are going to be put into, what, Metro District 3 through 5, right?
Yeah, so there's a there's a total of 16 districts across five service plans. So the Natural Resource District is is one, reunion, sports, entertainment, cultural district is is a second one. And then the other 14 districts are spread across the other three development areas, reunion center, reunion village, and reunion ridge.
Okay. So we're not, so when I say one through five, we're not talking about the original one through five metro district, correct?
Great, great distinction. No, those are called the North Range Metro Districts 1 through 5. One and two are, well, all five are created. One and two are in effect right now with a couple of sub-districts. We're looking at Village 7 up near Buffalo Run Golf Course, which is under development right now for District 3. And then Shea is retaining Districts 4 and 5 for their commercial areas that they have on 104th and 470.
I see. Okay. I know from the last time I had asked about, what's the service plan for North Range 1? Is it 40-year service plan? It wasn't clear what that was.
Yeah. So the North Range service plans were approved a long time ago, and they are not under the Model Service Plan that the city currently has in place. There is not a, what I would call a debt term limit associated with the North Range districts. They do have a debt cap on their mill levy, but they don't have these other types of restrictions that we're talking about tonight.
Okay. So with that, just say, the maturity of of that bond right now, whatever it is, I think it's supposed to mature what, in 2034, I think it is, or?
Yeah. I cannot remember the term associated with it, but I believe they were issued with the 30-year maturity.
All right. So this, the new ones here, 1 through 5, it said here, you know, once this, the debt is paid off, there's going to be a 25-mil operation maintenance, the life of the district. And then some of these have, they all have a 3,000 residential facility fee at the time that, the time the building permit, right? That's $3,000 towards, to the city, or $3,000 towards?
That would be $3,000 that's paid at the time of building permit by the home builder to the district. And it would be utilized for capital improvements. So it could be used on a cash basis as improvements are going into the ground. It could also be pledged towards the debt that the districts issue, in which case the district would collect it, and it would turn that money over to the trustee.
Okay. And then not all these have a improvement fee of 2% of the sale. So when the house is sold, there's additional 2% tacked on to the house, for closing the house?
No. So the the public improvement fee that we're talking about for commercial property only would be applicable in reunion center and the reunion village. Both of those have commercial. Also applicable to the reunion sports and entertainment district, conditioned upon the city taking those further steps with the authority agreement and a service plan amendment to approve that financing plan.
All right. So within that sports district, that's where the school's going to go, right?
That is correct.
Okay. And then as far as construction on that building, I know there's mills set for other construction, other improvements. Why not have a mill set for maybe the construction of the school? So so you guys build a school, and through the mills would pay it off, instead of, because the other districts, you have five of them. And, I mean, on average, if you if you split it up, so they're all paying into, you know, within district, and it would reduce it down to 70, 72 mils, but?
So so right now, in the reunion sports and entertainment district, there's very limited financial authorization. So we don't have the authorization in that district to issue any debt. We don't have the authorization in that district to impose any debt service mill levy until we come back to the city and engage in further discussions on the authority agreement and get that entity up and established based on an IGA with the city, and come back at that same time with a service plan amendment that would have a complete financing plan associated with it. So, you know, right now, there are still some ongoing discussions as to how all of that's going to be ultimately financed through that district. But we don't have any authorization in the service plan as it's being proposed to you right now.
Okay. And I should add, the school, so the funding, the primary funding stream for school development is per people revenue. So, subject to an approval of the charter by the district, let's assume for a minute the district approves the charter, then as students, so 165 students that will be our first class, there's a portion of that per pupil revenue that is passed from the state to the district to the charter. We use those per pupil revenues to pay the bond, or the, in this case, the financing mechanism we'll use, which will be privately financed through a private marketplace, a private placement, to pay for that school.
Okay. That's the last question for right now. The reunion metro district, which is the reunion ridge, the district that's close to the arsenal, and that's going to be tied into natural resource. So would this development happen if that natural resource development wasn't granted a permit to drill? Would this reunion ridge still move forward?
Yes, most definitely. The the infrastructure that I outlined in that service plan is for that development. And so we believe there's adequate assessed value in reunion ridge to fund those improvements.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from council for the applicant? Mr. Madera?
Just want to thank you guys for putting in real dollars what, you know, these special districts means. Because I think oftentimes, you know, people see mill levies, and they know that higher mils is bad, right? But you don't really know how it affects you until you put it into perspective into actual dollars. And, you know, so thank you for breaking it down, and also for including all the other overlapping districts. I think that was really helpful. Most of my questions were answered in Mr. Douglas's questioning. I just wanted a little more clarification on how the natural resource, metro district's going to work, and will that be offsetting some of these other mill levies on the other districts?
So first of all, per our agreement with the operator, we've got a 50-mill levy cap. So it will be different than the other districts. But the use of those proceeds are not limited to that area. So we've built in some flexibility there, where the the revenue would be generated, which I think was in the $20 million range, would be able to be used to fund infrastructure throughout reunion.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council for the applicant? Saying none, I'm going to go to the audience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, I know there's folks in the audience that have a desire to testify during this hearing. I will take you from the front of the of the room towards the back. We'll give you three minutes to come up and testify during this hearing process. So if you have a desire to speak on this particular hearing, please raise your hand. I know who wants to speak. Anyone in the audience want to speak? All right. I was assuming there was going to be more. The young lady on the inside of the aisle here, yes. Susan, trying to think your last name. Susan, trying to think of your last name.
Good.
Good, please come forward.
My name is Susan Good, and I live at one seven nine three eight, East One Hundred and Fifth Avenue. And I am a resident in the North Range District, um, Metro District for reunion. The concern that I had, and, um, I appreciate your diligence in reviewing all of the technical documents, I referred to the, uh, the project summary for, uh, the layperson's term of what I was reading, and the area that caused me a bit of concern, and I believe we may have received an answer, but I want to clarify that, um, in the section two, it refers to, it is contemplated that the district will, um, cooperate with other Title Thirty-two districts in the greater reunion community to assist in the financing of public improvements, including street water, sanitary, sewer, stormwater, and park and recreational improvements for the Natural Resources District. And I want to ensure that as a resident in the North Range District, I am not in any way subsidizing the costs of improvements for the Natural Resources District. When I moved to the reunion community, my real estate agent warned me that the taxes were very high because it was a growing community and we were building infrastructure. And I understood that going in. However, I did not buy into the idea of supporting oil and gas with my tax dollars. Thank you for your time.
Get an answer for you. If the applicant, thank you. If the applicant wants to answer that question for, for that young lady, I appreciate it.
Relative to the natural resource district, in no way, shape, or form are taxpayer dollars being used to set up or approve or operate that district.
Thank you.
Yep.
Susan Noble?
These special districts are complicated, of course, it's the privatization of the public sector and came about because of Tabor. But the problem is, is that it incurs, um, a lot of debt. And I am particularly concerned about the, um, reunion ridge area, which I spoke about two weeks ago, and, um, I would consider that an objection. I realize that it was noticed in the Commerce City Sentinel, and not a lot of people pick up that newspaper, but I will consider two weeks ago an objection, and this is an objection as well. I want to point out that the slide that was put up for reunion ridge said specifically that the twenty-four wells would provide financing with improvements for reunion area. While you're doing business with this particular developer, keep in mind that there was a city council meeting on August fifth. On August sixth, there was supposed to be a reunion metro district meeting, and it was canceled abruptly, just a sign on the door. If they are to be accountable, then why was the election of last year canceled? For three open seats, there were only three nominees for those three seats, and all three of those nominees work for Oakwood Homes. No one else knew that there were openings in all of reunion, and you know from all of your constituents who live in that area that they would like nothing better than to be on that reunion special district board. I think that's really all I want to say, but I would please urge you to not approve reunion ridge as part of this plan until after some decisions are made regarding oil and gas activity and regulations. Mr. Lee had also made clear two weeks ago that they would be willing to build up to those wells, and there needs to be setbacks both directions. You have the opportunity to say, no developers, you can't develop close to oil wells and vice versa. None of that should be occurring there because of the arsenal, because of the twenty-four-inch, um, uh, gas pipeline that's there, and because it's going to be affordable homes. It is really an environmental and, um, injustice, for sure, for anyone living in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Saying no one else, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Now it's up to the council for a motion concerning resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty-one, reunion village metropolitan districts number one through five. Mr. Madera?
Sorry, that was on from before, but I'll go ahead and make a motion. Move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty-one.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Davis is the second. Ask the city attorney to read the title.
Resolution twenty nineteen eight one, resolution approving the consolidated service plan for reunion village metropolitan districts, number one, numbers one through five, and the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Commerce City and the reunion village metropolitan districts, number one through five, in case MD one 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 nine.
Thank you, I have a motion and a second. Title's been read, is there any discussion from the council? Mr. Douglas?
We're just, we're voting each one of these, just to make it clear so everybody knows, we're doing one at a time, correct?
Correct, each service plan, which includes multiple districts, yes.
Yeah, and this, this is the service plan that's, um, south of one hundred and twelfth, west of, of Chambers, and then east of, uh, Potomac, right?
It is reunion village, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion? Mr. Davis? That's all right. Your light's on as well, Steve.
No.
All right, if there's no further, uh, discussion, I'll ask for a opposed vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion concerning resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty-five, reunion center metropolitan districts number one through five. Mr. Madera?
Move to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash eight five?
Mr. Davis?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, will the attorney read the title?
Resolution twenty nineteen eight five, resolution approving the consolidated service plan for reunion center metropolitan districts, numbers one through five, and the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Commerce City and the reunion center metropolitan districts, numbers one through five, in case MD one one two one nine.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Mr. Douglas?
And to clarify, this is for the approximately two hundred and sixty-five homes and a five hundred thousand square feet of, uh, commercial space, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I'm open for a motion concerning resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty-four, reunion sports entertainment and cultural metropolitan district. Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make the motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty-four, reunion sports entertainment and cultural metro district.
Mr. Hurst?
I second that motion.
The attorney, please read that title.
Resolution approving the reunion sports entertainment and cultural metropolitan district service plan and the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Commerce City and the reunion sports entertainment and cultural metropolitan district, in case MD one one three one nine, resolution twenty nineteen eight four.
Is there any discussion from the council? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now I'm open for a motion to consider resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty-three. Mr. Teeter?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty-three, reunion ridge metropolitan district.
Mr. Davis?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, well, will the attorney read the title?
Resolution twenty nineteen eight three, resolution approving the consolidated service plan for reunion ridge metropolitan districts, numbers one through four, and the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Commerce City and the reunion ridge metropolitan districts, numbers one through four, in case MD one one four one nine.
Thank you, is there any discussion?
Uh, thank you. Uh, this is just, this is just for the reunion ridge homes, does not include, uh, the natural resource district.
The natural resource district service plan is the subject of the next resolution.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, you wanna roll call vote on that? Sir, please pull that one up. Six in favor to oppose, motion carries on resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty-three. Next item, I'm open for a motion concerning resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty-two, reunion national, natural resource metropolitan district. Mr. Teeter?
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty-two, reunion national resources.
Okay, Mr. Douglas?
I was gonna make a motion to, uh, hold this off until we talk about oil and gas issue, but?
I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Davis, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty-two. Will the attorney please read the title?
Resolution twenty nineteen dash eight two, resolution approving the reunion natural resource metropolitan district service plan and the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Commerce City and the reunion natural resource metropolitan district, in case MD one one five one nine.
Thank you. Is there a discussion? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, and this one right here, I, I think it would, would, would suit us best to hold this off until we work on our land development code of our extraction agreement, that deals with one eighty-one, just because of where this is, sits next to a residential growth area.
Mr. Hurst?
Uh, I actually support this as an option for those discussions. We pass it today as, so it can be considered as an option moving forward in those discussions with oil and gas as we move to, uh, address that in our city, you know, possible locations, possible, um, compromises, if you will, of, of both, from both sides, and so I approve this moving forward.
Is there any other discussion concerning resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty-two? Saying none, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote on this. Six aye, two nay, motion is carried. Takes us to the next portion of our meeting, resolutions. We have resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty, which is the USDA Cooperative Service Agreement. Anyone on council who has questions regarding this resolution? Hurst, your light is on. Yep, that's right, Douglas, your light is on.
This has to do with the prairie dogs?
This is resolution USDA Cooperative Service Agreement. Do you want more information on it?
Yes.
Okay, is there a staff person available that can give a update on, um, resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty?
Mr. Mayor, we have, uh, we don't have a presentation prepared, we have staff available to answer questions.
Okay, um, so if there are questions from the council, now's the time to ask them. Mr. Douglas, you're on deck.
Okay. This has to do with the Second Creek space?
Yes, the restoration of the Second Creek open space.
Okay, and a lot of people are asking about, uh, implementation of this. You know, we talked about this April and June, so what's the rollout and the plan going forward as far as mitigating?
What's before you this evening is, is actually the contract with the USDA to, uh, begin doing the, the prairie dog mitigation. Uh, so that, that's the action before you this evening. The plan would be, uh, if council were to approve that resolution, would be to enter into that contract immediately afterwards and then start mitigation efforts within two to four weeks.
Okay, all right, I brought up in my, my minutes, so, okay.
Any other questions from council concerning resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty? Saying none, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this resolution? This is the, uh, resolution to enter into a contract to mitigate the prairie dogs. Is there anyone who wants to, to, to speak on this particular issue? Saying no one, I'm open for a motion. Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty, USDA Cooperative Service Agreement.
Mr. Hurst?
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second to approve resolution twenty nineteen dash eighty. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, motion is carried. When you have, uh, presentations, we have the Tri-County Health Department update on the plague. I'd like to invite the representative from Tri-County Health forward to make that presentation. Good evening. Why don't you, uh, start out by giving us your name and let us know who you're with, and, and give us your presentation.
My name's Janine Orvola, I'm with Tri-County Health Department, and I'm an environmental health specialist.
Thank you.
So, quick background on plague, um, it's a bacterial disease caused by Yersinia pestis. It occurs in the western U.S., including in Colorado. And people and/or animals can get, um, infected by bites of infected flea, touching or skinning infected animals, or inhaling respiratory droplets from a person or animal who has pneumonic plague, so it's in their lungs. And it is treatable with antibiotics. So on July thirty-first, Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge reported a prairie dog that was positive for Yersinia pestis. Commerce City employees observed a lack of prairie dog activity in the prairie gateway open space and at Dick's Sporting Goods Park. And one of the Commerce City employees put this map together, but, um, the red area was an area where there was, um, definite prairie dog die-off observed by Commerce City employees. The top orangish area had not been surveyed at the time of the thirty-first. Um, and then the bottom part, on the south part of Dick's Sporting Goods Park and that, um, dirt parking lot that they use, um, during large events, had a lot of prairie dog die-off, and then the green part, um, did have some live activity. There's also two... So the big green dot where it says Dick's Sporting Goods Park, just to the left of that are two dirt parking lots that they also use that have prairie dogs. And there was some decreased activity over there as well. The big red spot in the prairie gateway open spaces where they were planning to shoot off fireworks, um, and when we went out there, there was some recent dead carcasses and stuff. So on August first, um, Tri-County Health Department, Commerce City employees, went out onto the spaces, and at Dick's Sporting Goods Park, uh, there was very little, um, prairie dog activity, maybe a couple of bunnies, um, and then we did- Um, and then we did collect fleas, um, from the parking lots of the dirt ones, um, and submitted them for testing, and we did the same thing on the, um, open space properties that Commerce City, um, has. Um, and what we do is, we have, um, a flexible snake kind of thing with, um, a white flag on the bottom of it, we put it in the prairie dog holes, um, they think it's an animal, um, the fleas are hungry, so they, um, jump onto that, and then when we pull it out, we can collect the fleas, so we can submit them for testing, so that's how we get those. Um, and then the fireworks site also had some fresh prairie dog carcasses as well. The surrounding areas, um, we're continuing to monitor prairie dog colonies, like up at Second Creek. We don't think it's gonna spread up into those neighboring areas, but it's still being monitored. The recommendation for residents is to keep their pets restrained on leashes, um, and so that they're not roaming free, um, and also to, um, treat their pets with flea powders if they're outdoor pets, they also go indoors especially. Because what we don't want them to do is go into the prairie dog fields, sniff around, get fleas on them, and then bring them home into their house with them. August 1st and 2nd, um, public access, access was limited to the affected areas, uh, we put up lots of signs, um, Commerce City, um, employees also helped, um, post signs on the open space property. Um, the trails were closed, um, Dick's Sporting Goods Park, the parking was restricted to only the asphalt parking lot, um, and then the fireworks site was also closed. Tri-County, um, applied insecticide to the Dick's Sporting Goods Park, um, dirt parking lot areas, as well as the, um, Commerce City open space property. And then we also released a press release, um, in coordination with, um, all of the partners involved. This is a sign, or a, kind of where all of the signs are and who posted them, um, so there's numerous signs all over the place, some are metal, some are, um, paper with lamination, so there are quite a few out there. Um, August 6th, 8th, and 9th, we can continue to, um, do insecticide application, um, this is used to kill the fleas, to help stop the spread of it. So, if there's other animals using the burrows such as, uh, rabbits, um, if they go in the hole, the, um, insecticide gets on their coat, and then if they have fleas, it kills the fleas, so it doesn't harm any of the mammals. We're continuing to reassess the area for fleas, um, in the dirt parking, parking lots, um, and at the fireworks site. Um, on August 8th and 9th, uh, we were continuing to assess all the areas, so flagging for fleas, uh, we did find some fleas that we were able to submit for testing. Um, we continue to, um, treat any burrows that had fleas, um, with, um, a second round of insecticide, um, and additional press releases were released. And then on the 14th, um, we still continue to reassess areas where we previously found fleas, um, and treat those burrows with insecticide. So, kind of a summary of the actions, um, we posted a lot of warning signs, all the burrows on the dirt parking lots at Dick's Sporting Goods Park property were treated with insecticide, um, as well as the prairie gateway open space, um, especially at the fireworks site and along the side of the trails, and the east side of Quebec. And then, there's also a little strip north of the post office area, kind of where they do the motorcycle riding school in that parking lot, um, that was treated as well. Um, and then we also turned in some additional flea samples. And then late last week, we're also able to turn in another prairie dog carcass. Um, so we're continuing to check burrows for fleas, um, if we found some recently after the last side, round of, um, treatment. Fleas were tested for plague, um, the burrows that had fleas were retreated, and they're gonna be checked weekly, um, and affected areas are gonna stay closed with signage until the areas are closed. We're gonna continue to monitor the areas, um, around the refuge, um, for additional die-off activity, um, and share weekly updates, um, with press releases regarding the status of areas, um, and as of right now, there's no human illness at this point.
Thank you for your presentation. I, I do have a question, and I think it's something that the public would want to know. What are the risks, um, at this stage in the game of seeing the infected fleas being able to, uh, get into other colonies further onto the refuge or off of the refuge?
Um, so, I think David's gonna speak about the arsenal activities with this, but, um, they've also done a lot of the similar things that we have, um, so it should mitigate, um, additional spread, um, so hopefully, we don't have any. We just found a, a fresh carcass last Thursday that was positive, um, on Dick's Sporting Goods Park property, so, um, it's still out there, it's not done yet, um, but the fleas are gonna get hungry if there are some out there, um, and there's very few animals for them to feed on, so hopefully, there's not gonna be, um, much additional spread. We still wanna watch out for it.
And I realize Dave's gonna give us an update on the refuge side of it, um, but for the folks who have prairie dog colonies in their backyards, you heard from some of them this evening, further north in different areas, um, you know, the risk that is posed to them, their families, their grandchildren, um, further north, uh, do you think with the treatment that's taken place and with, uh, the activity for the plague mostly being around Dick's Sporting Goods Park area where we are down here, um, that the risk is, uh, less at this time for them to be moving up that, that way?
Um, I do think there's less risk because, uh, we haven't been finding very many fleas. Um, a lot of the, for the fleas to become infected, they do have to, um, bite an infected animal. Right now, there's not very many animals out there for them to do that with, so they might just go hungry and not, um, feed, and they do need to feed to lay more eggs. Um, prairie dogs are very colony specific, so they're not going to just go running over to someone else's colony, um, and kind of spread it that way. What can happen sometimes is if you have, um, coyotes who are not very susceptible, or other, um, small mammals, um, like rats or mice, um, that might pick up the fleas from that colony, um, and then they can transport it to other colonies. But, um, if the prairie dogs in people's backyards or in open space near their house are alive and healthy, um, there's probably no plague going on over there right now because prairie dogs are very susceptible. So typically, if there is a, a plague instance with a social colony like that, they're there one day and then they're gone the next. It's very noticeable, so definitely if, if, um, people are seeing something like that happen, we want to know about it right away so that we can go out there and, um, check out the area, see if we can get some carcasses or fleas for testing. Um, the best thing that residents can do for, um, helping to reduce their risk of, of plague, if they have prairie dogs near their home, is to make sure that they're using, uh, flea treatment on their pets, um, especially if they're going outside, um, if they have dogs that go inside as well, um, not sleeping with their pets, because if they bring the, uh, fleas into their home and they sleep with their pets, then the fleas can get onto them when they're sleeping. Also keep their dogs on leashes, um, if they have outdoor cats, same thing, use flea repellent on their cats, um, so that they're not bringing the fleas in. Um, cats are much more susceptible to plague than dogs, um, so with cats, we worry about the cats becoming ill, um, if they're not treated, um, then it can get into their lungs secondarily, and then, um, if the cat sneezes and they're really close to their owners, like a lot of cats like to do, um, then it can spread to owners through the lungs. So, we really do worry more about the cats than dogs, um, but the dogs, it's a matter of bringing the fleas into the house, so, um, definitely using flea repellents and, and safety. There's also some really good information about prairie dog management on the CSU Extension Site, um, about, there's lots of different options, um, and not just pesticide ones, but, um, putting up barriers, um, prairie dogs don't like to cross things that they can't see through, so it has some information on there about how to kind of mitigate that.
One last question from me. Um, you just saw that we passed a resolution to have the USDA come in and treat some of the prairie dogs in some of our open space. If prairie dog colonies get too large and they go unmanaged, what is the cycle of the plague, um, for those type of colonies when they get too big?
Yeah, let me see if I can kind of answer this in, right now, and what's kind of going on with the summer and such. Generally, plague is, um, thought to be maintained in small little, um, rodents, um, and then when we have, um, wet winters, and then we have cooler summers, kind of like we've had now, we get a lot of vegetation, and so we get more, um, rodent populations, we get a lot more fleas, and so with all of that, um, kind of sets for a good plague year. And so, by reducing populations, you, you can kind of keep it a little bit more in check, because they're not as close to each other, um...
I guess where I was going, I, I, I had a area boards meeting a while back, and I was concerned that we may end up with, uh, a plague outbreak because of some of the size of the prairie dog towns, and I had, uh, asked the Tri-County Health Department, uh, folks that were there that day, and they said the last plague in our area was off Riverdale Road and like 136th Avenue, um, a year or two ago, um, and that we were, we were doing this area because it used to be every five years, like clockwork, colonies would see, uh, a plague outbreak, and, uh, I believe that they said it was 19 or 21 years, um, that they had seen that kind of an outbreak, uh, here on, on the refuge, or in this area, and I can ask Dave to expand upon that when he gets up. But, uh, you know, just to let our residents know, it's a cycle, and when colonies get too big, um, that's a nature's way of reducing the population.
Right, and, and it's not necessarily a certain set of years that that can happen, um, it really is a lot dependent on weather patterns as well.
Sure.
Because that sets us up for, um, more grasses for them to feed on, they'll have more babies, and then you get more fleas, so... If it's not as hot as well, um, plague is a lot more likely to survive in, um, cooler hotter summer than when it's really, really hot, like it has been the last couple of weeks.
Um, is there any other questions from the council to Tri-County Health concerning the update on the plague? Mr. Douglas?
Thank you for being here, and thank you for your presentation. On this, um, plague or helping, helping residents out, do you have any, as far as advice for them, say, for, to treat their animals that's gonna, that's, that's not as costly?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Instead of having our, our, uh, residents go to a vet, which could be really costly, what can they do to offset the cost of treating their animals if they come in contact with the plague?
If their animals come in contact with plague?
Yeah.
Um, well typically, if we have, um, someone who calls us and their pet, um, happened to come into direct contact with a prairie dog or a rabbit or something like that, um, we, we would recommend that they treat them for fleas, um, because like we said, we don't want them bringing those into their home, um, and then we would also have them monitor their pet to see if, to make sure it's not getting sick, and if it does, to contact their vet right away. I personally don't have dogs or cats that go outside, so I'm not sure if there's over the counter things that they can get without going to a vet's office or not.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions at this time concerning the update on the plague? Saying none, thank you for coming in this evening. Alright, Dave, Rocky Mountain Arsenal National Wildlife Refuge update.
Honorable Mayor, members of council, I just, uh, wanted to jump in quickly and assure the council that on a daily basis, staff is monitoring our open space areas that are adjacent to the refuge, looking for signs of the spread of the plague so that we can identify it early and start, um, taking appropriate action. So, we're fortunate, Willis Waterhouse lives very close to the area, and so every day on his way into work, he drives that area, and, uh, so we're keeping him on the close end.
Thank you. Alright, Mr. Lucas?
I've been looking for you, Dave.
Have you?
Yes.
Well, hello, Mayor, Council. This is Charlie's presentation, actually, so I won't be using that. Troy, you said that I could possibly put this under the magic device? Document imager? Alright, um, but this is, this is just kind of for background, but I appreciate you having us here today. Couple of things really quick, um, I think you should know that Troy did a pretty remarkable job during this event, as well as open space parks, um, they've been wonderful to work with, and it's been amazing to work with Tri-County on this, they have some s- pretty remarkable, um, subject matter expertise on this. Um, as you know, they deal with a lot of plague, um, this is a common event, really, in Colorado, it's just more common in rural areas. What we had unfortunately happen here is, um, we had an interface with a lot of people in a lot of, uh, areas that are highly frequented with visitors and other folks. Um, so, as Janine mentioned, um, we, we first detected, uh, and confirmed prairie dogs on, we, we found them on July 22nd, they were submitted, results came in on July 31st, which ultimately started the cascade of communication and working together. Um, our first priority at the refuge obviously has been public health, both visitors, staff, and everyone else. So, once this was determined, we met with all of the interested parties, um, and we all kind of came up with a game plan together, and based on the recommendations and the desire and the size of the Rocky Mountain Arsenal Wildlife Refuge, we felt it was necessary to take a pause, close the door, and make sure that we understood where this might be occurring, where it might not be occurring. Um, we had, pretty proactively, we went after and began using the insecticide that you heard, um, to dust these prairie dog burrows to kill the fleas, we dusted all the trails in these areas and began the flea counts that Janine talked about. In addition to that, we kind of attacked this almost like a wildfire, and began that large green area up in the northeast corner, again, kind of creating fire lines, um, 20 to 200 feet wide with insecticide to create a barrier, to block off these areas, to maybe hopefully keep that from occurring. As you can see on our map, um, we suspect plague went up to about 80th Avenue in Havana, um, and then there's a small area, you can see it kind of hooks around to the south of the lakes and down to 56th on the right, and obviously, it affected areas in this square mile, um, where you guys reside. I think the key take homes for us are, while it's unfortunate that it was detected in these areas where there's a lot of people, um, I think the lot of people are part of the reason it was detected. Um, the fact that you have so many visitors and you have so many open eyes in these areas down here allowed people to report, people to see that there was a die-off beginning. Hopefully, that allowed for a relatively rapid response by everybody that's involved in going after this and hopefully containing this issue to a smaller area than it could have been. Last outbreak on the refuge was in the early 2000s, um, pretty much killed 98% of all the prairie dogs on the refuge during that, that outbreak, and that's been more typical for what's happened in the past. I think what's also important to recognize is we have been doing a lot of plague management, the area in green is where we use the oral vaccine on prairie dogs, and the area in the northwest is an area that we've been trying something new. All of these prairie dogs are fed in a bait, Fipronell, which is ultimately, um, frontline, and that provides one year treatment to all of those animals to keep the fleas away. If that's working, will be, yet to be determined. I think the other important thing that was mentioned is this is climatic, that's the only thing that really has been proven so far, is that when we have these wetter drier, I mean, these wetter springs, generally El Nino conditions, it equals the potential for plague. Plague is endemic, it's there all the time, during the appropriate conditions, as Janine mentioned, it comes out and it arises. My personal opinion is that while unfortunately there is some concern and a lot of hardship to some of our neighbors, particularly Dick's, um, this has been a challenge for them, um, we were lucky that it was identified quickly and that everybody jumped together and pulled together like they did. I mean, it really was a pretty remarkable response by your staff and by Tri-County. Everybody was on the ground immediately, um, Willis was on, driving the rounds and searching and had, you know, cleared vast areas, um, in remarkable time, and, and was able to tell everybody what was going on, and I, I really believe that that allowed Tri- I, I really believe that that allowed Tri-County then to come in and others to come in and really, really put a strong nail into this. So with that, I'll, I'll be quiet.
Thank you, Dave. Is there any questions for Mr. Lucas from the refuge? I do have one. I know some folks are concerned, including myself, about the black-footed ferrets and how this may affect that thriving population. And do you anticipate some loss of the ferrets that have been doing so well on the refuge because of this outbreak?
That's a great question. Obviously, we prioritize public health first.
Well, absolutely.
But ferrets were always in the back of our mind. Massive investment by all of us taxpayers into the ferret program. They reside in the area that's now in green and the area that's up in the yellow. We will begin surveys next week. But all the prairie dogs in those areas are intact, which are the food source. Probably our risk right now to ferrets is the young that were, have been born within the last sixty days and they are unprotected, they're unvaccinated at this point. And if they did happen to encounter an, an animal that was plague infected, it would probably kill those babies. I guess what I can tell you is that big green blob up there, as of Friday, we have applied over two thousand pounds of this Delta Dust. That is, our staff was working sixteen hours a day, every day after the, after this was notified. We did put them eventually back onto normal schedules, but they've been out dusting every single one of those prairie dog burrows along the northeast side of the arsenal. That's, as you guys know, that's thousands upon thousands of miles driving and going back and doing this work. So we hope between the vaccines that we've been applying and this massive insecticide kind of attack that we've stemmed it off and that the black-footed ferrets will be okay.
How about any of the other wildlife on the refuge that may be affected or you may see some die-off, whether it be predators, coyotes, badgers? How would it affect the deer or the bison? And I know, I, I'm asking because I know residents would have a question.
No, it's a wonderful question and I, I mean, one of the challenging issues to this is the prairie dogs are kind of the, the indicator species, the canary in the coal mine, whatever you want to say. We're used to hearing them, we're used to seeing them, and then suddenly they're not there. It is affecting all small mammals in these areas. So there's mass die-offs of all sorts of prey base and all sorts of creatures that normally exist in this ecosystem. What we don't complete, well, what I don't personally completely understand is it, it is definitely very focused on rodents. While we can, as you heard from Tri-County, be a receptor as well, it's unlikely. Bison can, any mammal can be, but it's unlikely. Those, those canids, the coyotes, you know, they, they can pass it, but they're not extremely susceptible. So it's, it's kind of unique in that regard. Our birds, birds are unaffected. So it has to be mammalian, it has to be, and generally it's targeted at those rodents. So any of those small things that we don't normally see that are running around at night, the mice, the voles, the badgers, all those things are certainly at risk. And if they were in one of these red blocks, they're probably not there anymore.
I appreciate the update, Dave. Can you tell the residents when the refuge will be back open and operating? I, I did see a, a release on some information, but since everybody's here or watching at home?
You're always wonderful at helping me to, to give a good presentation, Mayor Ford. Thank you. I neglected that key fact. The refuge reopened on Saturday at nine AM, the vast majority did. Trails that were in prairie dog areas and were affected by plague will remain closed. The recommendation from Tri-County is thirty days for all of our trails, whether they're on your lands or our lands, from when the insecticide was applied. They're continuing to reevaluate. So that would put those trails and those areas closed until just after Labor Day. But the vast majority of the refuge is open sunrise to sunset like it normally is now.
Great. Thank you, Dave. Is there any other questions for Dave while, while we have him up here? Thanks again. I do have an update concerning the prairie dogs around Dixporting Goods Park. Given the fact that every year the Fish Concert is here, the weekend of Labor Day, Tri-County Health has closed off and will not reopen the areas in dirt around the stadium. So areas where a lot of the Fish participants would normally be camping, they won't be allowed to be camping. Where they have their, what's the alley called, something alley?
It's called Shakedown Alley.
Shakedown Alley.
Located in the dirt lot between City Hall and the stadium.
Right, so.
That will not be happening.
Shakedown Alley apparently will not be happening either, which is where a lot of the participants sell grilled cheese sandwiches or whatever they need to sell to get to the next concert. The reason I bring it up is because these people are still coming to the Fish Concert, they're still going to want to be camping. And we may be seeing an increased issue with camping throughout our community. They may be trying to camp in parks and, and other spaces since they won't have opportunities here. So our police department and staff are prepared to, to make sure they have an action plan to be able to keep people from camping in our parks and everywhere else. And they're also going to have a hard time protecting some of this open space that was fully infected, that nobody's camping over here to the north of City Hall and the stadium. So be mindful of that. We have an event coming up and the camping area is not going to be there, but there's still going to be a lot of people coming into this community. They're going to want to set up a tent somewhere. So I'm, I'm hoping that it goes smoother than what I may be expecting it to go over Labor Day weekend. But we will have our staff and our police department looking out for our parks and, and open space areas that we do not allow camping in. I just wanted to lay that out for the residents to understand what's happening because of this plague and the Fish Concert. No Shakedown Alley and limited camping because of the dirt lots with the affected fleas. All righty, move on in the agenda now. Administrative council business. Mr. Mc, Mr. McBroom?
Mayor Ford, Charlie Sharman actually is here with.
I didn't even see him on the list.
With a separate presentation.
Oh, good.
With a refuge update.
After sitting here all night long, I would not want you not to make your update. So Charlie, like, good to have you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Ford and city council members. Good to be back in front of you. I was here last October talking about our groundwater cleanup program and groundwater monitoring program and how it relates to oil and gas development in the area. Tonight, I'll be talking about some sampling programs we have ongoing or planned for this year, as well as give you an update on where we are with our plans for the building of a new groundwater treatment plant at the site. So a little more detail about what I'll cover. I'm going to give a brief overview of our, our site and the ongoing operation and maintenance activities. I'll then spend a little more time on the, the two thousand nineteen projects that we're working on and that's specifically soil sampling and groundwater sampling that we're conducting. Also then, give you a, a quick summary of how the groundwater treatment we've been doing is impacting the plumes and then talk a little bit about our, our new groundwater treatment plant that we have planned. And then close with any questions that the council may have. I think you're all very familiar with the site, but what I did want to point out on this map, most of the site is the National Wildlife Refuge. Shown in yellow on this map are the areas that the Army manages. And specifically it's, there are two landfills, two waste containment areas and five groundwater treatment plants. About eleven hundred acres or so that we manage on, on site. Fish and Wildlife manages the remaining fifteen thousand acres on the site. A couple of yellow blocks to the north of the arsenal are areas where we have groundwater treatment systems. And so we do lease some property north of the site for the purpose of groundwater treatment. As far as the state of the program, we, we completed the surface remedy at the arsenal in two thousand ten and we've been going, undergoing long-term operation and maintenance since that timeframe. These two thousand nineteen projects that I'll talk about are all part of our ongoing long-term operations and maintenance. They've been planned and will be conducted in cooperation with the regulatory agencies, specifically EPA, State of Colorado and Tri-County Health Department. And they represent our ongoing commitment to make sure that the remedy remains protective of the public health and environment and takes into account the existing standards as well as new standards that, that have come along the way. And with regard to the, the first project dealing with subsurface soil sampling at the site, really this is what it's focused on and that is addressing new environmental standards that have come into, into being since the remedy was implemented. And specifically, we're two chemicals, chemical agents that the Army either stored or manufactured at the site, specifically VX and mustard. VX is a nerve agent that was stored on the site, it wasn't produced here. Mustard was produced at the arsenal. And so the Army has developed new long-term chronic exposure numbers. And so this is something if you are exposed to these agents over a lifetime, basically they've now developed numbers that would be considered safe for that type of exposure. So we now have to look at the sites that used to handle agent and basically recertify that we don't have them at these new lower levels. So we have been working in cooperation with EPA, the state and Tri-County to develop a sampling program across the site that basically can recertify that we don't have these chemicals at those levels. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll mention, I was working in cooperation with the regulatory agencies, well specifically, we are going to be using EPA's mobile laboratory. So that's what you see in the pictures on this slide, our EPA's mobile lab. They'll be bringing it out to the site. We'll be doing the sampling, taking the samples to EPA's lab, which will be in the center of the site. And they'll be doing the analysis. Shown on this map in green are the sites that at one point in the arsenal's history had some activity that was related to, to chemical agents. And so we'll be taking a total of a hundred and four samples over fifty-two locations over these, these green areas. We expect it to take two to three weeks and we'll probably start around the September twelfth timeframe. And we've been working with the Fish and Wildlife Service as well. And they are likely to, well, they will be closing the auto tour route for at least a portion of the sampling, but maybe not the entire sampling activity. So we expect to be done with this program either by the end of September or first week of October. Another program we have going on right now is some additional groundwater sampling for what EPA terms as emerging contaminants. These are contaminants that either have new health information available or new technology has lowered detection limits where you now can see lower than you used to be able to. So EPA has, has flagged these as emerging contaminants. It's a nationwide activity. There are some that are pertinent to Rocky Mountain Arsenal. But there's a couple of them that not only are at the arsenal, but metro-wide, Colorado-wide, nationwide. So the first of those chemicals, the acronym is PFOS. You probably maybe heard about it in the news down in Colorado Springs. It stands for perfluoroalkyl and polyfluoroalkyl substances. And it's a family of chemicals that is related to things like food packaging, non-stick cookware like Teflon, firefighting foams is another source of these, these substances. And so at the arsenal, there's no significant history of it, of these family of chemicals, but we want to go and take more samples to make sure we're not a significant source. NDPA, which stands for nitrosodimethyl, I'm sorry, propylamine, is a specific chemical related to a pesticide that was produced at the arsenal in the sixties and early seventies. Plantaven is the pesticide, this chemical is a result of the, of the production process. So it's a, it's part of the waste stream. And it was disposed similar to other liquid wastes at, at the arsenal in, in basins and whatnot. Last chemical is one for dioxane and this is another nationwide chemical that's been looked at in the Denver metro area as well as other metropolitan areas. And it's, it's related to solvents. It's typically added to solvents to help stabilize them and make them last longer. And it, and it's one we're going to be looking at a little closer. To kind of recapping where, where we've been and kind of where we're going this year for the PFOS chemicals, we have done some initial sampling. The only place we found it above health standards was in the center of the site, in the saw plants area. And so we'll be doing some more sampling to verify that that's the only place that we have it above standard. We have detected it in our groundwater plumes at low levels, below the health standard, but not migrating off the site. So our sampling this year will be confirming those results. NDPA, as I mentioned, is related to the pesticide production and, and we know, we've seen that in similar areas to other groundwater contamination that we have on the site. So we'll be doing some additional testing to confirm the results we've already had. This particular chemical, NDPA, we have added to the list of chemicals that we will continue to routinely monitor for. Good news is that both of these chemicals are effectively treated by the treatment plants that we have on the site already. Our treatment systems are primarily granular activated carbon. And carbon effectively removes both of these chemicals. Another good piece of information is that off-site, we have no one drinking groundwater that is affected by RMA contamination. And so PFOS, NDPA, and then one for dioxane, none of those chemicals are in anyone's drinking water, you know, related to the RMA groundwater plumes. So that's, that's ultimately what we, we use to certify that no one's being impacted by RMA contamination. We were closely with Tri-County Health Department. They have a private well monitoring program that, that helps us certify that no one's, no one's drinking the water impacted by our contaminants. Where we stand with one for dioxane sampling, we have done sampling over the last several years for that. We, we generally see it in the same groundwater plumes as other, our other chemicals. We do have this particular chemical above the standard at our north boundary. It is not removed by granular activated carbon. And so we are looking at a different treat, treatment process to add to our north boundary system in order to remove this chemical. It's, it's barely above the standard at the north boundary and within about a half mile of the site, it dissipates to below the groundwater standard. And, and again, no one is drinking water in the area where we do have it above the standard. So we will be going through and looking at options for, for additional treatment for this chemical. This is a, a map that I showed you last October. Won't spend a lot of time on it, but I just want to reiterate that on the left-hand side in green, we have the composite groundwater plume. And it's a shallow groundwater plume and it's a composite of all the chemicals that exceed drinking water standards. And that was what the picture was back in nineteen ninety-four. On the right-hand side, also shown in green is the composite plume of what it looks like in two thousand fourteen. That's the most recent significant round of sampling that we've done. We do annual sampling, but not as widespread as this plume is drawn. So to compare, make sure we're comparing apples to apples, you can see how reduced the, the green on the two thousand fourteen map is. And that shows. the green on the 2014 map is, and that shows you how effective our groundwater treatment has become. Same time, technology has improved, and for one chemical specifically, dieldrin, we have a lot lower detection limits, and the health standard for dieldrin is very low. And so, shown in purple on the 2014 map is the areas where we detected dieldrin at lower levels where they were not detectable at that level back in 1994. So, groundwater treatment's been effective, but we have the ongoing challenge of chasing the technology improvements. So, how we're cleaning the plumes up, we have a total of five systems, as I mentioned. I'm just going to talk about the three that are located at the boundary and off-site. And so, on the left-hand side of this slide, you see some pictures of the treatment plants themselves. The one on the bottom left is our northwest boundary system. It's located at 88th and Highway 2. The one along 96th, the pretty blue building that sits along 96th Avenue, is our north boundary system. And then, the one along Peoria, about a half mile north of the arsenal, is our off-post system. And that's in the top left of this slide. These systems have been around for quite some time. The oldest is the north boundary system. It was built in 1981. So, we've been treating groundwater for over 38 years at that location northwest. Was built in 84, and then the off-post system was built in 92. So, these plants have seen a very productive life, and we're going to be treating groundwater for many decades. And so, we're looking at a more efficient and effective way to treat groundwater over the next many decades. So, we are looking at putting a new plant in at the location at 88th and Highway 2. This is an artist's rendering of it. We're about at the 50% design stage for this particular plant. The idea here is to consolidate the operation of those three plants into one, be a more efficient operation. And it also provides us the capacity to add treatment processes such as for 1-4-dioxane. We'll have the room in this plant in order to add this treatment that we need. We're looking at this being not only a significant efficiency in our long-term operations and treatment of groundwater, but also an improvement of the aesthetics of the community and the fact that we will be able to tear down those three plants that I showed you on the previous slide, once this plant is built. We are about 50%, the 50% design level. If we get funding, we could start construction as early as next year, but we expect, if it doesn't happen next year, it'll be in the next two to three years that we'll be able to build this plant. So, in kind of summary, we want to emphasize that the remedy remains protective of people, wildlife, and the environment. We continue to work with the regulatory agencies to certify that that is the case year in and year out. We've made a heck of a lot of progress, we think, on groundwater treatment so far. We have more to do, certainly. And by investing in a new treatment plant, we feel that's give us the best, puts us in the best position to ensure that we continue to reduce groundwater contamination in the environment long-term. So, we'll continue to work with the regulatory agencies to keep the remedy protective, and we're excited about the new opportunity to build a new plant. So, with that, I'll see if you have any questions I can address regarding the presentation tonight.
I have a comment, just an observation. Dave Lucas said they just dumped 2,000 pounds of pesticides for the fleas on part of that refuge. So, in 20 years, when they identify another chemical you have to look for, you might want to look at him. Mr. Douglas.
Thank you for your presentation. On this slide there, Treatment Impact Plumes, and it shows 1994, 2014. There's legends on here, and I don't know if you can explain what these are on, I'm sure probably somebody can go over and click back to the Treatment Impact Plumes. Yeah, right there. Where it shows the little red dots that are on facility and then off the facility, just up there by Highway 2 and 96?
Right.
Yeah, where are those?
I didn't go into that detail, but the red dots on there are either extraction wells or recharge wells. And so, we pump water from those locations to our centralized treatment plant, and then we reinject clean water back at those locations. So, that's what they're intending to show.
So, I mean, I read this in the paper and all that, and I know about the, I know you probably can't expand on it, but about the lawsuit. What's going on there to take care of that? I mean, are they working well together and try to figure things out?
Yeah, I really can't speak a lot about the lawsuit, as you can imagine, but I can tell you that it has no impact on our commitment to have the remedy be protective of people and the environment. And so, it's largely about who has the final say as to whether it's EPA or the state, but that kind of needs to be sorted out.
Okay.
Probably in the court system.
And the watershed, where does the water go? I mean, it's just so, they detected there's a leak, but besides that, because there's a lot of water that's below ground, of course, these aquifers, and how's that protected so it doesn't keep flowing off the, you know, as far as watershed leaking and maintaining its, I guess, capacity? How do you guys control that?
I'm not sure I completely understand the question, but let me describe for you that the groundwater contamination we're talking about here is in the shallow aquifer.
Yeah.
And so, by us intercepting contaminated groundwater, treating it and reinjecting clean, we're having that positive effect on the downstream water, which then eventually would lead to, say, the South Flat River.
Right.
And potentially discharge into the South Flat River. So, that kind of is the strategy behind our treatment efforts.
So, the water that is there, that's on the refuge, and say that's contaminated, you guys are treating it, and then so when it's released back into the, because it's tributary to the river, it's going to be just treated from coming off the site, right?
Right. And pointing out, talk about the leading edge of a plume up here.
Yeah.
So, groundwater contamination beyond this point meets, well, it's either nonexistent or it meets drinking water standards. And so, there isn't groundwater contamination, say, beyond roughly a mile of the arsenal that is above drinking water standards. And so, that water continues to flow to the northwest toward the South Flat River. So, that's how we protect from any continuing environmental concern.
Okay.
And just to expand on that, when the groundwater issue was identified, the Army came in, and anybody that was in that affected area was hooked onto municipal water that were in shallow well areas, or at least offered that from the Army as part of that remediation, correct?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. That's a point I should have made during the presentation, but yeah, that's another reason why we are confident that no one's drinking RMA-affected water, is that we provided hookups to those that wanted it back in the late 90s to the South Adams County Water and Sanitation District. And in some cases, we ended up installing deep wells for folks that either had a shallow well or had a damaged deep well that might have been leaking. So, either by hookup to South Adams County or provision of other supplies such as a deep drinking water well, we're able to make sure folks aren't drinking contaminated water.
And this is the last question. What's the purple again?
Okay, the purple is, and most of it is one specific chemical, dieldrin. Back in 1994, the detection limit at that point was 50 parts per trillion. The detection limit now is 13. And so, when we lowered the detection limit, the health level for that particular chemical is two parts per trillion.
Yeah.
Okay, so every time we are able to improve technology, when you detect it, it's above the drinking water standard, okay, at least until we get to two parts per trillion. And so, what the purple represents basically is areas that were non-detect at 50 parts per trillion, but now when you can detect down to 13, you now see it between, say, 13 and 50. Does that make sense?
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions for Charlie while we have him here? Saying none. Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Always appreciate you coming here. All right, Mr. McBroom, give us the oil and gas update.
Mayor Ford, we're happy to answer questions about the update if you'd like. Certainly Dominic Martinelli's been here all night to give you the oil and gas update, but in the interest of time, we could simply answer questions if you'd like about it. It's published in the packet. But if you'd like to have us walk through it, we can certainly do that.
Let me ask the council. Does the council have any questions concerning the oil and gas monthly update? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, there's a letter that was addressed to the county for a thousand-foot setback.
The letter in the packet was staff's comments on Adams County's proposed regulations.
Okay, so, there's some staff that staff supports that, is that what that is, the letter?
It's certainly consistent with what we've negotiated at this point in the regional operator agreement. I think we had some more specific comments recommending how to apply the setback.
Okay. And how did, okay, that's fine, because this is from support in Adams County. All right, thank you.
Is there any other questions about the oil and gas update? Mr. Hurst?
Didn't get a chance to read the full update. Is there any changes, whether significant or not, in the update from last month?
There are no new applications since the last monthly update.
Any other questions concerning the oil and gas update? Mr. Madera?
When will we get an update on any draft changes to the ROA?
Perhaps by the next regular meeting on September 16th.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Wadiola?
With that update, how long do we have to vote on it?
The regional operator agreement is approved by the community development director. So, our thought would be if the agreement is in its final form or close to its final form, we would share that with city council the night of the 16th to see if council has any additional input before moving it along the administrative approval process.
And are we going to have an opportunity to let the community see it again? I know we talked about it last time. Is that a council decision that we all have to be on the same page to do another comment period for our community?
Council does have that authority to set a new 21-day comment period. Remind me, Mr. Sheasley, staff can make that determination. There's a third basis for a new comment period.
The operator could also have a question.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the oil and gas update? Saying none. My head greyhound purchase and sale agreement. Open for a motion. Mr. Madera?
I'd like to move to authorize the mayor to sign an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement to extend the deadline for the buyer to complete design guidelines to October 28, 2019.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frank?
Second that motion.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, if council desires to instruct the staff regarding the negotiation of Third Creek West Annexation Agreement, you have an option to ask, put forward a motion, enter into executive session with city council and city staff pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, PERS 4, PERS B, and E, to discuss and determine negotiating positions regarding the annexation agreement relating to Third Creek West Annexation and receive legal advice regarding such agreement. Any members of council that want to act on that? Councilwoman Frank? No? Mr. Davis? All right. So, that is what is before you. So, if there's anyone that has a desire to make a motion to enter into an executive session for those reasons, now's the time. All right, going twice, nothing. Gone. All right, now we're into the business that council has the opportunity to bring forward, our administrative council business. I do have one item that was brought to my attention from a former council member in discussions with a former employer, employee of the city who currently serves on the board for Anything Library District. You have in front of you today is the Sparkopolis sponsorship benefiting Anything Foundation. It's Saturday, September 7th. They're requesting $1,000. Bronze sponsorship gives you, for $1,000, you get two complimentary tickets. Non-member individual tickets are $100 each. So, it's up to the council if they desire, I'm assuming this is a one-time, not year-to-year type of scenario, but I noticed they are working towards that project and reuniting. Mr. Douglas?
Well, that's for a different matter.
What?
I was going to ask about something else.
Okay, yeah, is there, does any of the council members have a desire to sponsor, have the city sponsor the Anything Library event for $1,000? Mr. Hurst?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this sponsorship.
Councilwoman Frank?
Second that motion.
Have, and let me ask the motion maker. I threw out two options because it's $1,000 for the bronze sponsorship with two complimentary tickets, or you can buy, depending upon how many council members want to attend this, you could buy 10 tickets for the same amount of money. So, it depends on how you want to invest your $1,000. So, I'm going to leave that up to the motion maker.
I would like to clarify that motion as the bronze sponsorship, $1,000 with two complimentary tickets.
Okay, is that acceptable to the second? All right, a motion and a second to allow for a $1,000 sponsorship for the Anything Libraries, and it would be the bronze sponsorship package. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And that was a weak aye, just so you guys know. It's getting late. That's all I had. Is there any other additional council business, administrative council business? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you. I was going to ask, are there any updates on the EV charging station?
We can collect an update and send it out to city council.
Okay, thank you.
Any other administrative council business? Saying none, I'll move into reports. City manager?
Mr. Mayor, in addition to last week's city manager update, just one update for city council. As you all know, next Monday at 4:00 p.m. is city council's annual budget retreat based upon direction from the city council Retreat Planning Subcommittee. Based upon direction from the city council retreat planning subcommittee, we have been able to put together additional information for next week. It'll be ready ahead of when we would normally publish the packet. We actually have hard copies of the materials here. It'll also be published as part of the packet the way we normally would. Most of the information is similar to what you saw on July 22nd. We do have some additional detail of the capital improvement program projects proposed for 2020, so we'll hand these hard copies out. Happy to answer any questions in the meantime. And certainly the purpose of the, of the retreat next Monday is to walk through the information and with council's help, make some final decisions on the draft budgets so we can start assembling the draft budget book for the adoption process. But we'll, we'll hand those out to you between now and next week. Certainly if you have questions, let us know. And again, the purpose of the retreat is to go through the information in more detail, answer questions, and help council make some final decisions. That's it, thank you.
City attorney?
I don't have anything to report, but I do just want to indicate that based on the lack of an additional executive session or instruction on the Third Creek West Annexation Agreement, I and staff will respond in line with the prior direction from the city council. That is how I am taking that, and I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay, thank you. My report, I had just a couple items because it's late and I know everybody doesn't want to hear me ramble on. Just want to thank again the council members that participated, Hurst and Wadiola, in the Paint-a-Thon. I do have the other, Troy, if you want to grab these while you're up there. I do have the other three gifts for the kids from the youth commission that helped with the Paint-a-Thon. But thank you to the two council members that were able to get out there and help with that effort. I want, I want to also thank the city staff for their efforts in our outreach program and completing that last outreach. I mean, I know it looked like everything was going to get rained out. It turned out to be okay, and I know the staff works hard to make those a success. So appreciate all of the, the staff that put those together. I also appreciate all the other entities that have booths and take part in those efforts. National Night Out, I want to thank our police department primarily for the services they provide to our residents. National Night Out seems to be a growing effort in our community. It gives the opportunity for our officers to go out and mingle with some of our residents in a different type of environment. So I want to thank the chief and all of his folks and the residents that are taking part and participating, participating in National Night Out. I know things have been a little crazy lately for the police department, but looks like they have everything under control, which is the most important part. So, and thanks to the staff that helped put that program together. It, it's a, a good thing for our community to engage in, as well as I know you just recently had that open house tied in with the fire department. So kudos to the police department and the fire department for working together to have all that equipment out here and allow residents the opportunity to come out and, and kids to play a role and see the equipment and talk to officers and firefighters in our community. It's a big deal right now, police, police departments and police officers. I don't think they get the recognition that they all deserve anymore nationwide. And I think it's important as elected officials that we continually show our support for the police department in looking after the safety and well-being of our residents. So chief, please pass that along to the department. All right, I'm going to end there. I know I probably missed a few things. I tried to hit on, hit on the big things. Mr. Douglas, do you have something to add?
Yes, me and Rick attended the rooting cutting for Mercy Housing at Holly Park. The infrastructure, they, they did transformation, they spent about $41 million, and it helped change the lives of those folks live over there now. They have air conditioning, all the units have air conditioning, all the windows have been updated for energy efficiency, and they also, some of them did not have dishwashers, now they all do. Just to improve the lives over, over at Holly Park. And just want to say thank you for, for the city also helping too, because the, the families love going over to the water park. I think that's a big hit, so, thank you.
Thanks for adding that, because I did attend a groundbreaking while you guys were at that Mercy, ribbon cutting for Logistics Park at 112th and Highway 85 that will bring several million square feet of office industrial product that we are really short on in our community. So that, what they had in renderings, looks like it's going to be a great opportunity for, for the city. Mr. Hurst?
Oh, I'm done yet.
Oh, you're not done yet?
Yeah.
All right, hang on.
And then, and then, sorry, and then Northeast Transportation Connection Board, we met last week, and we were talking about Route 62, and I know we dedicated $40,000 in our budget for next year, so looks like that's not going to happen going forward, that 62 route. So we can take the $40,000 and dedicate it towards another maybe RTD router. So Troy Whitmore, he was there, and so here in the future, you want to get together because when, when the light rail comes online, we're going to have to have some sort of bus service to that line there, so, thank you.
Hurst?
I don't have a report, but I did want to clarify something. I thought we voted to extend the conversation on Third Creek until September 16th. Just kind of paused that whole thing until then. Is that, did I get that wrong?
The action council took this evening was to continue the public hearing on the annexation eligibility and the zoning. In order to act on the annexation, the city will need to enter into an annexation agreement with the developer that includes terms that both parties find acceptable. One of those is the funding request presented this evening. And so that conversation was not continuing the, I indicated earlier that we would need direction to modify the city's prior position on that. So if council wanted to modify that position, yeah.
So we had, we had a chance to change the position through, if we went to executive session, but the way I think, and I'm not speaking for Jose, but we've kind of been talking, the way I'm trying, we try to kind of understand is we just pause the whole thing until September 16th, so.
No, the, the hearing, I think you have to consider the hearing as being separate from the annexation agreement. The hearing would consider the terms of the annexation agreement. We could continue that to have more information, but at this point, there's no additional information to bring forward unless the annexation agreement is finalized. That, that essentially requires a response from the city on the proposal this evening on the funding element of that. Council could do that in executive session or could be directed to us in open session if that's the desire of council.
So we're basically on the hook for what, the, what they just told us, the, the funding mechanism and all that? We're agreeing to it?
No, we, that, I mean, the proposal, the request from the applicant is that the two GIDs issue bonds to fund almost $14 million in regional improvements, about half of which is going to be fronted by the developer and repaid through the ERA GID at 8% interest.
At 8%.
So the change in the proposal that we were discussing was the money was not being fronted by the developer in our original proposal that we heard.
The prior proposal was an uncertain, not really defined funding option that include debt issuance from the GIDs, that didn't include a fronting from the developer. That is a new component, but it is ultimately backed by bonding from the ERA GID.
Yeah, so essentially the same proposal with just the, the fronting is what changed.
That is how I would do it. But so, so if council wanted to modify that position and wanted to talk about whether it was a good idea to do that and to establish the term of an annexation agreement that would then allow you to act on the annexation agreement, we would need different direction from the city council.
Here, Jose.
Sorry, I was seeking better understanding, so we can, we can discuss that if you guys would like.
And here's my issue with that, is it's 11:40, right? And we're again pushed against a wall that if we don't go into executive session right now and discuss that, basically agreeing to that, and again, September 16th comes around and we have to make these hard decisions, that's not fair to all of us by doing this, and it's not fair to our residents, because now we have to make another decision.
May I explain the, the process? Once, if an, if an annexation agreement is reached, that would then be executed by the city manager, subject to ratification by the city council at a future date on the 16th. Another alternative is as part of the budget retreat, I believe Mr. Victorum was going to offer, to set a special meeting so you could just have an executive session to discuss that. That does compress the timeframe between next Monday and the 16th, but that is also an option if you wanted that opportunity to discuss it further.
Does that make sense, Jose?
It, it does make sense, and again, even if you do reach an agreement and you go back to them, it's not fair to them if we have to change it, right? Because we're not on the same page, because we could amend that agreement, and what if they put work into it by the city manager? Say you guys reach an agreement, it still comes back to us, and we're not on the same page and we deny it, then it's all the work that Brian did and the staff and that company, it's not fair to them that we just said no.
That is the, the, the risk that both parties take in doing this and why we are seeking additional direction or have in the past.
That would certainly be the, the value if some council members had a desire to revisit their prior position. Doing that as soon as possible would be ideal. You're right, 11:45 at night isn't the best time to make a quality decision. I would suggest then scheduling a special meeting for next Monday. You can always not have it if you decide not to, if a majority of council members do not wish to have an executive session next Monday, because that direction from council would be critical to help us negotiate that agreement so that when it comes back to you, staff's in alignment with city council.
Well, Oscar won't be here, and I think we've said it three times, and we're still seeing the same thing.
Can we just make a motion and get it over with? I think if we can probably get this over in an executive session in the same amount of time that we do discussing here publicly, so if I may, can I make a motion?
Sure, you can make a motion.
Make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, Prince Four, Prince B and E, to discuss and determine negotiating positions regarding the annexation agreement relating to Third Creek.
There a second? I have a whole bunch of lights lit up, so I don't know who's wanting to second.
I'll second that.
All right, Mr. Hurst is the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion is carried. So we will be going into an executive session. When we come out, we will go into, we'll close this meeting and go into the ECA GID meeting.